I'd like to bring this month's meeting of the Metro Historic Zoning Commission to order. First of all, are there any council members here that would like to speak before we get started with the agenda? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. We have a public hearing, and for each case there will be one. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve 2 minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that a public keep their comments to 2 minutes unless they're representing an organization or group, and they may have 5 minutes. We're about to start the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the items be removed from the consent agenda. Consent agenda?
The consent agenda includes 916 Boscoble Street, which is an application to change the rear setback of a previously approved dadu. 1620 Ordway Place, new construction addition. 102 South 17th Street, new construction addition and setback determination. 3701 Richland Avenue, which is Lot 14 of the Richland Hall Development. That's an application for new construction infill and outbuilding with a setback determination. 1426 Roberts Avenue, new construction outbuilding with a setback determination. 150 Windsor Drive, new construction of addition and a partial demolition. 28210 Broadway, an application for signage. 1504 Sweetbrier, application for an addition and outbuilding with a setback determination. 1322 Sixth Avenue North, new construction outbuilding and appurtenances with exterior lighting. Is that being pulled from consent, Robin?
1322.
1322, okay. So I'm sorry. So 1322 Sixth Avenue North is being pulled from consent, so that is not part of the consent agenda. 4503 Park Avenue is an application for demolition and new construction of addition and setback determination. 1010 Lawrence Avenue, new construction outbuilding. 1116 Ordway Place, new construction outbuilding, which is a dadu and a setback determination. And that completes the items on the consent agenda. Staff has found that all the items on the consent agenda meet their respective design guidelines.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Seeing none. Open public hearing if there's anyone that wanted to speak regarding taking these off the consent agenda. Seeing none. Close, oh, do we have one? Okay.
3701 Richland Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, close public hearing. Motion to approve?
Show move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Pursuant to the provision in Section 2.6A.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is applicable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. You're advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the historic zoning commission. So I guess our first one is going to be 3701 Richland?
Before that presentation, I just wanted to make clear, in case there was anyone here waiting for it, but the Germantown Design Guidelines will be deferred until next month.
I apologize, I was not prepared, and I don't have slides available for 3701 Richland Avenue. You can see the top image is a rendering of the front facade, so you can see that there. So 3701 Richland Avenue is an application for new construction and infill and an outbuilding with a setback determination. This is Lot 14 of the Richland Hall Development, so I'll hold up some drawings, I'm not sure if that's helpful or not. But most of the Richland Hall Development is on the east side of Richland, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. I just thought it might get us back on track, just in case anybody's waiting or confused. I believe after consent and the Germantown Design Guidelines were removed, we went into violations before new business. And 119 Third Avenue South and 421 Broadway had been deferred until next month, so that would bring us to 423 Broadway. I will back, thank you, sorry.
I'm confused here. Which one are we starting with now?
423. If we stick with the agenda, right after consent, we had the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines, which has been deferred until next month.
I got you.
The next on the agenda were violations, and the first two have been deferred until next month. Is Paul here?
Okay, I got you.
It sounds like just more or less because the item was moved from, even though it was on consent, it just falls in regular rotation with...
I got you. That's what habit will do for you. Okay. I apologize to the person who pulled it from consent that we started. We'll start with 423 Broadway then? Okay.
423 Broadway is in our violations section this afternoon. A rooftop addition was approved last year and was constructed as permitted. However, the business installed some unpermitted features, metal poles fixed to the railings with string lighting attached. The guidelines for new construction require that additions be located at least 30 feet from the front of the building. Permanently installed features such as those that have been fixed encroaching into this area do not meet the guidelines. Section 2T specifically for lighting states that lighting should be simple and unobtrusive in design materials and relationship to other facade elements. String lighting and the supports for it do not meet the guidelines as they are easily visible and encroach into the aforementioned area. Also, unpermitted signage has been installed on the building's awning, as seen here. This building is allotted 46 square feet for signage. The approved projecting sign, which you can see in the image beyond there, is 44 square feet, which leaves 2 square feet in their allotted area. Staff estimated the area on the awning at 28 square feet, so the building is an estimated 26 square feet over its allotment. The guidelines also limit the width of text and graphics on an awning sign to 75% of its width. The text on the valance here takes up approximately 90% of the overall width. Therefore, the awning signage does not meet the section for awning signs either. In conclusion, staff finds that the installed features do not meet Sections 3H for additions, Section 2T for lighting, and Section 4 for signage, and recommends their removal within 30 days of today.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Are there any questions regarding this? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant available, would you like to come forward?
I don't see anyone, sir.
Okay. All right, open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing none, close public hearing. Discussion? Or motion?
Mr. Chairman, this seems to be a pretty clear-cut violation of clearly stated guidelines, and I recommend that we agree with staff recommendation and adopt this.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go to 3701 Richland Avenue.
We had two pulled from consent, so if it's all right, we'll start with 420 North 16th Street.
No, 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 1322 Sixth.
Sorry, it's 1322 Sixth. I've gotten my agenda off target now.
We normally, do you mind if I do 3701? It's just, we've already done it twice. I'd normally take the first one off and make it the top, so let's just do 3701 if you guys don't mind, unless you need more time to prepare.
No, we're just going to switch to 80, because they second that some visuals.
At least we have it to.
Okay. Thank you for your patience. So, um, good, how does this work? There we go. There you go. Yeah, keep going. Can I do this? Okay. Am I able to do it? Okay, so 3701 Richland Avenue is Lot 14 of the Richland Hall Development. Just to refresh your memory, this is in the Richland West End Conservation Zoning Overlay. There's a total of, I believe, 22 lots that will be redeveloped for single-family houses. This is a former Welch College campus. We've approved, I believe, lots 1 through 6, and then also Lot 11, so we've approved quite a few houses to date. This lot is part of what you see as Phase 2, so it's on the corner of Richland Avenue and Craighead, right kind of where it says Phase 2. I'm not sure if you can see the lot number there. Here's the site plan, so it's a corner lot. And for corner lots, the base zoning is typically 10 feet from the street-side property line. They are requesting, I believe, 6 feet, let me make sure it's 6, no, from the side property line. Sorry, give me a minute, sorry about the delay. All right, yeah, so I'm sorry, apologize for that. So it will be 6 feet from the Craighead side property line, but base zoning requires 10 feet. The same for the garage, the outbuilding, which is not a dadu, it is going to be 6 feet from the side property line, whereas base zoning typically requires 10 on a corner lot. It meets all the other base zoning setbacks. Staff did find that the 6-foot side setback determination is appropriate. We looked at the historic contacts, and I'll show some photos here in a moment, let's see if I can go back to see the photos. So the photo on the top is a house across the street at 3700 Richland Avenue, and it sits very close to the side property line as well. Get the exact, it's definitely less than 10 feet, and it's less than 6 feet as well. When I went out to measure it, it was 4 feet 9 inches for most of its depth, and then it was 2 feet from a bay, so it also sits closer than 10 feet. So staff found that because there are historic houses in the neighborhood, particularly one just across the street on the corner where the base zoning, where the setback was less than the base zoning 10 feet, that what is proposed as 6 feet is appropriate. Just another thing to point out on the site plan is typically, we require at least 20 feet in between the infill and the outbuilding. They are requesting 12 feet. Staff finds this to be appropriate. We've actually approved as little as 10 feet for all the other houses because of the, because there's no alley behind here, so they're having to create a new alley at the back, which is kind of scrunching the usable lot size. On the front setback, staff is recommending that the entire outbuilding be, or I'm sorry, the entire infill be pushed back 2 feet, and that's transition from this lot to the nearest historic house, which is at 3705 Richland Avenue. The applicant has agreed to that condition. Here are the floor plans, the first floor plans, and the second floor plans. Here are the front elevation and the left elevation, and the maximum height will be 34 feet 6 inches above the foundation, which is about 1 to 2 feet. Staff finds that the two-story form and the height is in keeping with historic contacts and also within what has already been previously approved for this development on Richland Avenue. Here is the right elevation and the rear elevation, and here are the images for the outbuilding. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the project with the following conditions. The front setback of the infill be pushed back 2 feet, so the front porch is 42 feet from the front property line, and the front wall is 50 feet from the front property line. 2, the finished floor height be consistent to the finished floor heights of neighboring historic houses. 3, staff approve a brick sample. 4, staff approve a stone sample. 5, staff approve the shingle and metal roof materials and colors. 6, staff approve the materials for the porch floors and stairs. And finally, 7, staff approve all windows and doors prior to purchase and installation. So with these conditions, staff finds that the project meets the design guidelines for the Richland West End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Thanks, Watson. Any comments to staff?
A question, Melissa, and I know you're not a surveyor, nor did the property line, when you did these measurements across the street, was the, your assumption about its proximity to the property line was kind of, was it back of curb, back of sidewalks? Sidewalks assumed to be...
Back of sidewalk, because what I was doing was comparing basically apples to apples. So here on this site plan they are showing, and I believe they have done a survey of this, they're showing the property line as the kind of interior side of the sidewalk line, so I made that same assumption for across the street.
Good, great, thanks for clarifying.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, thanks. Is the applicant here, would you like to speak?
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
I have no further questions.
Okay, thanks. So the applicant has nothing to add, but agrees with staff recommendations. All right, open public hearing. Would you like to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Wesley Weeks. I own the house at 3705 Richland Avenue, which is just the property next door to this one essentially. I've been asking for months to someone tell me what they're planning to build on the property, and no one has come forth with any plans to, I've invited conversation about it. And in fact, I wouldn't even know to be here today if my neighbor hadn't asked me about this, because I didn't get any notice about the hearing today or the applications, or no signs posted. To my knowledge, the property has not even been subdivided into 2 lots. If it has, that got done without my knowledge as well. It has been.
My understanding from the planning department is that it's in the process of being subdivided, but I don't think it's been officially subdivided yet.
I've got no notice of that, so I have questions about what they're doing, more along the front setbacks, how they're going to address drainage onto my property, things like that. Probably if they were just open up and have a conversation with me, we could probably work those things out pretty easily.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I was just going to say, since the applicant is here, maybe they could step into the hall, and probably some of those questions could be answered? No?
Okay, thanks, Robin. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak regarding this project? Okay, close public hearing. Any more discussion or motion?
I think to speak to some of the concerns raised by the adjacent property owner, while this form, you know, in terms of dealing with stormwater or water runoff from one property to the next, we, not within our purview, so we really wouldn't have a chance to speak to that, or even to procedurally to the subdivision. And understanding that, and the other adjacent properties that have been approved and reviewed by this commission, I would, it seems to me that the setback that the applicant has agreed to in the staff's recommendation would certainly make it appropriate and that it matches the adjacent home. And the evidence presented here, or the assumptions made here about directly adjacent across the street property on the side setback would deem this as inappropriate and compliant with our guidelines.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I didn't make that a motion.
Oh, I thought it was a motion.
So I guess, understanding all that, I'll move approval with staff right away.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, sir. 1322 Sixth Avenue North.
And just a reminder to turn your mics on, please. Thanks.
Let's back up one. Okay. This is an application to construct a new outbuilding, a planter box and sign, and to install lighting. What's shown here is a recently constructed building infill that was just wrapping up complete, or is completing now on the lot. The outbuilding will be behind this building, and it will be approximately 18 feet behind the back wall of the building. The outbuilding will be 570 square feet.
Sean, can you speak just a little louder? Thank you.
Yeah. The outbuilding, as I said, will be 570 square feet. It'll be behind the building, 18 feet behind the rear of the principal building. The planter box will be in the center of a courtyard between the 2 buildings, and the sign will be built on top of that planter box. And the sign, or the lighting, excuse me, it will be string lighting hung from the sign to the principal building and to the outbuilding. The outbuilding will be 10 feet deep, that's it there, and 57 feet wide, matching the width of the building, the principal building. It will be 9 feet tall at the front, with the roof sloping down toward the rear and attaching to a wooden fence that divides the courtyard from the parking lot. The posts and sidewalls of the outbuilding, which is being referred to as a cabana, will be wood. The roof of the building will be canvas. Canvas is not a typical roofing material for outbuildings, but because of the location and the direction of the slope, it will not be visible from the street. The planter box at the center of the courtyard was actually part of the original approval with the building, the principal building, but at that time it was proposed as a fountain. It's essentially the same except with soil filled in instead of water now, and there will be seating built into the planter around the center, the planting box. The planter box will be wood, and on top of the planter box shown there is a sign. It's not really an advertising sign because it's in the courtyard and advertises or displays the, kind of, the name of the space. It's more a placemaker or directional signage. But in any case, because of the location of the planter in the courtyard obscured by the building, it would not be visible from the street. In fact, here are renderings from the applicant that look very much like the pictures I took, and you can see the outbuilding there, where it would be shown, but the planter is towards the center of the building, would not be visible. They also are proposing string lighting, as I said, from the planter box to the outbuilding and from the planter box to the principal building. The lighting is to be string lighting suspended across the courtyard from the roofs to the sign. Here are examples of similar lighting in businesses in Germantown, but I should note that we did not approve any of these. In fact, their presence has really just come to our attention now, largely because we do inspections during the day, so lighting can be hard to come across. As I said, we did not approve those, and the handout we passed around shows, it's just excerpts from the permits. For instance, we permitted an awning, and it says no lighting is to be attached, so obviously that's something that's specifically mentioned as not being approved. There are others where it just was not mentioned one way or the other. Staff found that the guidelines for illumination say exterior lighting fixtures shall be compatible in style, size, scale, and material with the character and structure of the neighborhood, and illumination should avoid spilling onto adjacent structures, signs, or properties. Staff felt that the proposed signage, much like the signage, or the, excuse me, the lighting discovered, does not meet that guideline. And in visiting the sites to take pictures, we discovered this curb cut there in the front. The curb cut actually predated the building that's there now, but part of the proposal that was reviewed and approved in 2016, the plans show that this curb cut was to be eliminated and patched with brick to match the adjacent sidewalk. So staff would ask that that be done. And sort of to sum it all up, staff recommends approval of the outbuilding, planting box, and signage, with conditions that the ballard, that ballard lighting, or another type of ground lighting, is used rather than string lighting, and that's a new condition, that the curb cut is removed and the area is patched with brick to match the existing sidewalk, as was approved in 2016. And with those conditions, staff finds that this proposal would meet the design guidelines for the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Any questions for Sean? Okay, thank you. With the applicant here, would you like to come forward and state your name and address?
Just briefly, I'd like to remind the commission that the proposal is kind of limited to the 4 corners of the application that we have here today. Any previous permit that was issued and maybe not complied with can't really be bootstrapped to today's proposal. There are means that we can take to address anything that wasn't done previously, but we can't, unless the curb cut or the things that weren't done previously is somehow related to the proposal today, then it can't be considered as a reason for denying the current proposal.
Does that specifically relate to the condition number 2? Okay.
Just remove the condition number 2.
Okay. All right, so condition number 2 is withdrawn.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Erica Garrison, and I'm here representing the owners of 1322 Sixth Avenue North. We want to thank the staff and the commission for working with us on this application. We ask that you accept the staff's recommendation and approve our outdoor furniture design with one note regarding the lighting. Nevertheless, before I address the lights, I want to briefly address the opposition from the neighborhood. You've received a letter from the Neighborhood Association, which I've received a copy of, and a response, which I believe is being handed out to you and you may have received earlier. I won't belabor our response, but I do want to highlight several quick important points for you. The association has stated not one single reason why the outdoor furniture, or cabanas as they're referred to, are inconsistent with the guidelines and should be denied. Instead, the association has relied on other codes and permitting issues which this commission has no jurisdiction over, and therefore I don't want to address that in any other detail other than to say that my client is working with codes and will continue to work with them, and is prepared to continue to work with the association and the councilmen as we move forward with the project to make sure that it's in compliance with the zoning codes. I would therefore urge you to disregard their arguments, that they are not within your jurisdiction and inappropriate for this commission to consider, and instead I would urge you to accept the staff's recommendation, who we have closely worked with. You've also received a letter from Germantown Commons that primarily focuses on 2 things. One is use. The use of the seating area in a courtyard is being inappropriate and inconsistent with the neighborhood, and the prior decision to remove the cabanas from the design, and the fact that that, that once that decision was made, they should not be reintroduced. I want to take up the issue first with regards to use. The use of a courtyard seating area is appropriate and consistent with many other restaurants and uses in the district, such as Rolf and Darter's, Fifth and Taylor, and Little Donkey. It's outdoor seating, that's it. And the commission's staff has clearly opined in their recommendation that a use is not something the commission reviews. What might be concerning, however, is the allegation that my client removed cabanas and then is reintroducing them. That's simply not the full story. My client did remove a much larger, more dense cabana design when the construction of the restaurant was originally permitted during that process. Those cabanas were much different than the design before you today. The design before you began as a temporary patio seating that you're seeing today, which was discussed with staff recently, and it transformed into this in an effort to shield the light and noise that might be generated from that use from the neighborhood. Historics suggested the more permanent structure and the revisions to the design. Thus, they now support this design. This is being done this way, and permitted this way, in an effort to reduce the noise and light that would otherwise be emitted from the... and light that would otherwise be emitted from the tables in the outdoor courtyard. It's not intended to become a nuisance to the neighbors. So in a very real sense, this is a much different proposal from the proposal presented before. As for the lights, my client would like to install those lights away from the public facade. It's behind a non-contributing building, shielded from the street behind that building. The lights are relatively temporary and we would take the position that they are not affixed to a building and should not be appropriate for the commission to review as they're temporary and not a structure. Nevertheless, if you want to review them, we would like to emphasize the following points for your consideration. They're related to a non-contributing building. They're placed behind the building, away from the public, and they should not be obtrusive to the public or visible. The lights are low voltage and they should not pollute surrounding properties and they'll be blocked to a large degree by the landscape gaping and the seven-foot-tall fence. Finally, the lights are consistent with the look and feel of the district, as evidenced from the photos, although those are apparently unpermitted. And we would posit that the lights are consistent with Section 5.4 of your guidelines. They're shielded from the public view. They avoid spilling onto adjacent structures and they're compatible in style and material with the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you part of the owner as well?
No. I'm Patrick Bales. I'm an architect with MJM Architects.
Okay.
I was the architect for the original renovations of the houses on that property as well as the new building that currently exists.
The record, you said your name. Could you state your address as well?
Yes. It is 712 Fourth Avenue South.
Thank you.
I was asked to work with Anderson Design Group to put together a design for the cabanas at the rear of the building. Along the way, we were asked to, by the owner, to have a space for the cabanas and I've always provided power for the future cabanas. I don't recall any agreement to not build the cabanas at some point in the future, or at least I was never told of an agreement. We were, when we were negotiating with Sean, we proposed the idea of introducing a portable structure that could be, you know, simply put up and then taken down, rearranged if needed, and Sean actually felt like something more permanent would be in order. So the design of this canopied structure was to minimize the impact of the activity in the courtyard on the surrounding area. The canopy rises from the fence at the rear up to nine feet on the inside, as you can see in the, on the side elevation, and that helps to shield any lighting and sound from the neighbors. So I also want to make, just touch on one other thing regarding the curb cut. We did intend to leave the curb cut and a fence because we have a trolley inside the center building, and that was to be able to remove that trolley, you know, if it needed to be removed at a later date. So regarding the curb cut, I'm not sure exactly at what point along the line, you know, it may be that it needs to be bricked and we agreed to brick that area, and I'll be glad to go back and look at exactly how that transpired. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. You guys can have two minutes for rebuttal after the public hearing. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of this project? Would you please come forward and state your name and address? Okay. Seeing anyone like to speak against this project, please start, come up, say your name and address, come forward as well. Just cue yourself if you are.
Good afternoon, commission members. Curtis Harrington, attorney. And first of all, do I get five minutes or is it two?
Are you representing a group?
I am representing a group. Curtis Harrington of Farm, Sell, White Laster, here on behalf of the Germantown Commons Homeowners Association.
Okay.
I just saw two there.
Five minutes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, and I appreciate the comments of Ms. Garrison and Mr. Bales. We are here opposing wholly this application, the application for the construction of the cabanas, based on a few central reasons. The cabana structures have been a point of contention since the applicant's original submission of plans containing the proposed creation of the cabanas in 2016. We would argue that the cabanas are not in compliance with the historic context of the neighborhood, would negatively impact the surrounding properties, and perhaps most importantly, the owner has represented directly and clearly to the neighbors and to this commission that cabanas, not lesser cabanas, but that cabanas in general were no longer a part of this development or this site plan. The cabanas, no matter how you slice it, and this is consistent with the design in front of you today, are outdoor party structures to be equipped with speakers and a large square footage capacity for outdoor partying. During the commission's April 20th, 2016 meeting, it was decided by staff recommendation that since the site plan for the cabanas lacked sufficient detail, approval then would be, would not be considered. Concerned neighbors appeared during the April 2016 meeting to voice their opposition of certain elements of the site plan, including the outdoor cabanas and use of garage doors on the, on the primary property there, the trolley bar in the middle. The commission voted to disapprove the application based on the fact that the project was not consistent with the historic context of the neighborhood. Next, during the commission's May 18, 2016 meeting, after a meeting with the neighbors, through counsel and in support of the applicant's request for approval, the applicant stated that the applicant had met with the neighborhood since the last commission meeting and that the project had been revised in the following ways. The first way was that instead of garage doors on the side facades of the trolley bar building, the applicant had planned French doors. The second way was that the outdoor cabanas shown on the previous proposal were eliminated. Again, this was after a meeting with the neighbors, hearing the neighbors' complaints, concerns, and Richard Audet, who spoke during that May 2016 meeting representing the neighborhood, also spoke and referenced a meeting between the applicant and the neighborhood, recounting for the commission the applicant's statement that the patio structure now behind the building will not be used for anything other than a few tables. That was the owner's representation to the neighborhood. And now, some 15 months later, we see the applicant again seeking to reintroduce construction of the problematic cabana structures. And to address, it's convenient to try to argue that our issues here are use-oriented and not appropriate for this body. And I understand that's convenient for the applicant. I vehemently disagree. I believe what we are arguing are, A, representations that were made to the neighborhood, and we have a public forum like this, and I know the neighborhood's concerns are taken into account under the scope of the structure of MCL 1740 410. I know this body does consider the effect of lighting, sound, all of these different elements under the purview of the historic commission on the neighbors of the association. So this is not a use issue. That's, that's a fight for a different forum, and we realize this. We're trying to be very surgical and argue based upon the powers and duties of this commission for opposition of these cabana structures and that this commission today make a ruling consistent with the representations, the prior representations, both to the public, the historic Germantown neighbors, and to this commission regarding these cabana structures. The representation was not, well, maybe we won't build a structure this large or this specific. We see this no different than the prior proposal for cabanas. Their cabanas, it's a large square footage for partying, their music. And to briefly address the rear wall design of the structure, the applicant's plans are using the fence, the only sound and light border between the Germantown Commons and the bar as the rear wall for these cabanas, which will have large square footage and contain speakers. We believe that's inappropriate. By using this fence as a rear structural wall, loud music and other noise pollution will needlessly be directed towards the Germantown Commons. Thus, the applicant's design, if approved, would not be in the context of the historic Germantown neighborhood and would have substantial negative impact on the surrounding properties. Lastly, to exterior rope lighting, we defer to staff. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Neighborhood Association, the Historic Germantown Neighborhood Association.
I'm sorry. State your name and address.
I'm sorry. Richard Audet, 414 Van Buren Street. I'm president of the association.
Is that different from the one he was representing? Okay.
My twin. HDN is uneasy with the possibility that the historic zoning commission could issue design approval when the proposed work may further break other metro agencies' rules and regulations. We point specifically to major zoning code and parking capacity violations that appear to currently exist on this project. The addition of four drinking cabanas, the Beer Garden, will add more than 570 square feet to the total built footprint, significantly increase the number of patrons that can be accommodated and add to parking woes in the neighborhood. It appears that the Germantown Bar's present parking capacity already falls short of metro requirements. We also note that the staff recommendations, in the staff recommendations, there was mention of an 18-foot distance between the rear of the building and the beginning of the cabanas. The cabanas are another 10 feet. If you stand on the street, and, you know, obviously we didn't even request to venture onto the property, it doesn't really appear that there is a distance of 28 feet in total to the fence, and we'd like that to be verified. The historic commission initially rejected the cabana design concept and it should do so again. If this construction is approved, it will further contribute to non-compliance with Metro's parking and planning regulations. HDN strongly opposes the Beer Garden proposal by the Germantown Bar. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Would the applicant like to do a rebuttal? Likewise, state your name and address.
Sure. Ward Pace, 319 Lynwood Boulevard, Nashville, 37205. I'm one of the property owners and have become one of the operators of the property. And I'm, I'm a little confused on the talk about meeting with the, with the neighborhood, specific meetings I'm not aware of that actually occurred. And as I remember it and as I thought I heard the attorney say, the, we pulled, or my understanding was the discussion about cabanas was pulled because it was conflicting and all that and will be discussed later. It wasn't that we surrendered the right to ever do them, number one. Number two, we're not, our intention here wasn't to start building cabanas as much as to do an outdoor seating plan and to enjoy the space. I mean, the space is there, it's designed, it's, we've got roll-up doors. All that is conducive with using the outdoor space. And in our, I'm running short of time, but with historic meeting with us, it was recommended to us that, hey, we ought to do it this way and apply to you guys instead of just designing and doing a portable structure, which apparently, and I don't mean this in a cocky sense at all, but apparently if we create portable furniture, we can put it wherever we want and however we want. We were told to apply this way in order to make it better for the neighborhood with the angle of the canvas awning top to capture sound and light and put it there and snug it in behind the building and have the lights. I mean, everything is compacted behind the building. At one time, we had discussed doing a much more grandiose thing out there, and all that has been scaled back tremendously, so I'm a little confused by this reference to us surrendering the right to ever do that. I don't agree with that. I'd like to review whatever data points or signed documents. I don't know what you do about all that. But this structure is what we were recommended to do by historic, to come talk to you guys instead of avoiding you guys and just going and putting something in structure. I mean, we can go and put in couches or chairs. We've got to do something with the space. We have tables. We could go do all that. We're trying to design this to work with the neighborhood, not work against the neighborhood, to work with historic, not against the neighborhood or against historic. My time's up, but thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay. Closed public hearing. Discussion? While we're just waiting, so you did bring up about the string lighting. I just had a question about that. So we have never approved that before. Is it, is it something maybe we've done as far as up temporary? I just, if, any other kind of history about that would be good.
There haven't been any requests, so we didn't know these were, went up. All these permits either stated no lighting or if there is lighting, come back to staff, and they didn't. What we were dealing with is very vague guidelines that say exterior lighting fixtures shall be compatible in style, size, scale and material with the character of the structure and the neighborhood. And that's pretty much it. So our first thought was maybe all the lighting should be ground level, should be ballard, something like that. But we're really looking for direction from you on how to handle this particular case, how to handle light cases in the future. I'm sure people will be asking for this. We just didn't quite know what to do.
Okay.
Does the staff feel like there's a distinction to be made in this district versus the violation case that we just heard?
Yes, they are very different. This, this particular case is a rear yard request and that case was a rooftop request. So, I mean, there's lots of, if you think they're appropriate, there's lots of clarifications we can put on it, and we can also continue talking about this beyond this case. You know, maybe it's only a certain percentage. Maybe it's only in the rear yard. Maybe it's only in zones outside of the national register zone. Maybe, I mean, there's lots of different ways we could go about it, but without, with just this one sentence, we weren't quite sure where to guide this applicant.
Is there another follow-up question on the lighting? Does the staff see a difference between the, I guess, depending on the purchase of these or the description, or they're string lights? All these pictures are from a commercial application. I can see a scenario where seasonal temporary, not so temporary lighting would go up on non-commercial spaces. Do the guidelines, I haven't read them in detail, but do they, do they make a distinction between those two? Is this more far-reaching in this than other districts?
They don't. But, yeah, they don't, but just across the board, we've never reviewed temporary lighting. So holiday lighting, we've never reviewed it because it's only up temporarily. My guess is, we haven't talked to all these people yet, that these are all fairly permanent. They're not up for a specific event or a specific holiday. They're meant to be at least two or three seasons, you know, that they're not just holiday lighting.
One more question about the lighting that you guys might know better, but is it, wasn't it, it's not hanging on the structures, it's hanging between the structures, I think, is what, yeah, hanging between the structures? So I could really see if it was on the structure, but maybe between the structures?
I think if I'm reading the drawing right, part of it is being permanently attached to the building as a structural support.
Yeah, support.
I imagine they could pretty easily fix that if that were, if we were to make that distinction. I'm not sure at the end of the day, do we want to split those hairs or do we want the staff out policing temporary lighting on historic homes? And there's just a lot of questions here.
Well, like, I don't want to belabor lighting, but like, if, looking at the photographs, the top left and the top right, they're actually affixed to an awning, you know, whereas the middle one is kind of between a space, so I may have a, just a different feeling about it. You know, one is kind of changing.
I, I see that there's a difference there, but I guess, is there a difference there?
Yeah. Okay. I have to talk about lighting and more.
I was just going to say, I mean, with regards to the, you know, obviously we always want to be sensitive to the neighborhoods and everything and, you know, their neighbors, but, I mean, most of the arguments I did hear, you know, had to do with use and that's not under our purview and so, you know, if it fits with the design guidelines, that's what we look at. So I agree with the staff recommendation personally.
I tell you, if you want to make a motion, we can still discuss it some more since you've started it.
Well, do we need to discuss the lighting more? If we make a motion to approve, to staff recommendations, then that would be...
Okay.
I don't know. Lighting. I don't know.
Well, I'll have to say that it's in the back. The lighting doesn't really bother me from an architectural standpoint. I think that whether they have lighting going across or a different kind of lighting doesn't really bother me at all. And so I agree with you that what we're talking about, the staff recommendation approves the structures that they're building, and there's only suggestions... the structures that they're building, and there's only suggestion about lighting. I personally would make a motion to Mr. Chairman to adopt the recommendation of the staff for 1322 Sixth Avenue North.
Okay, and just a clarification, because you brought up the lighting, part of their recommendation does say that another type of ground, another type of lighting. So would you like to address that part of their recommendation?
With the caveat that they are allowed to put the string lighting up.
Okay, I'm gonna, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So under discussion, can we maybe give a little bit more clarification to the lighting, just to help staff out, help ourselves out too? Like, maybe it's, can be temporarily attached to the physical structures, or, I don't want to leap through you guys. If you want to, maybe you guys want to discuss that differently, but...
Could you, maybe enlighten me a little bit further why another type of ground lighting should be used rather than the string lighting? Is it ambiance? Is it aesthetic?
For us, it was about the lighting being up so high, and then possibly bleeding into property owners, neighboring property owners.
Would it be higher than the fence they're proposing to build?
I don't, I think it goes, I think it'd be a little bit taller than the fence because it's going, it's attaching to the building, it's going to that sign in the middle, and then it's going back out to the top of the cabanas, which is a little taller than the fence.
And that was the concern, that it would be visible?
Possibly, you know, that it possibly could be seen. That was the concern, that it possibly could be seen. One argument might be just to say that this is perfectly appropriate in rear facades, and then we can continue to talk in more depth about more direction for future projects.
Well, we certainly wouldn't want to disrupt a neighbor's bedroom and sleeping for...
Foot candles will be really low, though, for this, so it's not like, I doubt it will be shining in windows too much because of the voltage of each one of the lights.
Okay.
But based on what Robin said, then I think you're basically saying, maybe if you want to clarify, it's appropriate for the exterior of a building and not toward the front, then we can continue to deal with this more.
I think if, to provide what you asked for, or really, the limited amount of information that's provided in the guidelines, 5.4.2, exterior lighting fixtures shall be compatible in style, size, scale, and material with the character of the structure and neighborhood, irrespective of use, that's really what we have to go with. And then following that, avoid spilling light onto adjacent structures, signs, or properties is the next bullet pointed, or the next numbered guideline. And then ground-mounted light fixtures, spotlights, shall be screened from public view. Those are the three things that are in the guidelines other than precedence or other factors that might influence our decision.
Okay, well, seeing that, can I amend my motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, I would like to recommend, make a motion to adopt the staff recommendation in its entirety for the property at 1322 Sixth Avenue North.
Okay, so you're changing it to...
I'm changing my...
Okay. Okay, well, we had a, I'm sorry, now I've got a little bit confused here, because we had a motion, and it was second, based on the first one. Should his, her amendment changes that?
She can withdraw the original motion, and then...
There you go. Okay, good stop.
I withdraw the original motion.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do you mind restating your new motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to adopt the staff recommendations for 1322 Sixth Avenue North.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Okay, no second, so motion fails.
I just want to, since there's been public record, public comment on the cabana versus, you know, that conversation, I don't think we've really had any conversation about that other than lighting.
We did get stuck on lighting.
Yeah, did, so, just, again, because we've got a lot of public comment on that, or some very assertive public comment on that, you know, we hear, you know, we depend on staff to have those reviews, and they have recommended approval of the outbuilding, planning box, and signage. And I think, just again, to reiterate that when we look at the applicable design guidelines, which is 2.0 new construction within historic context, it seems that this design is within those guidelines. So, do you all have any other comment about the opposition to that because of the guidelines being followed?
I think in terms of it, it just rises to the level of being a building, if you will. I think pertinence might, I mean, a canvas awning to control, you know, high-frequency noise, you know, I don't, I'm having trouble following that. I think both the applicant has stated, I don't want to get too wrapped around what I think adjoining neighbors are concerned about, which are things that we don't have a tremendous, use issues and parking issues, we don't have a tremendous amount of control over, you know, for a different time and place. And so I think you're right. You come back to, you know, does the design, 2.9.4, design of outbuildings shall not be visually disruptive to the character of surrounding buildings. Does it meet that litmus test, and that, you know, that they be subservient in nature?
Right.
I'm nodding my head on a lot of those things. I'm not seeing a reason, considering this is a building, to say that it doesn't comply. I'm having trouble finding ways in which it doesn't.
Yeah.
Whether it's wanted or not, I'm having trouble finding a place in the guidelines where that's the case.
And I think that's what, you know, we want to have the public hear, is that when we make decisions like this, you know, with strong public comment, that our decisions are based on these guidelines, and if they are within guidelines, then we make those decisions appropriately. Just commenting.
Thank you, Mina.
I think one of the things, too, is that the guidelines and the talk about lights spilling onto adjacent properties. The staff have recommended a particular type of lighting that would accomplish that. I'm not so sure we need to specify the particular type of lighting, but if we put in the condition that it not be available from adjacent properties. When you look at it, the cabanas are almost nine feet tall, they're on either side of this, or the applicant's properties as well, as well as in front. So I think that it would be possible for them to meet a pretty easy standard of not being visible from adjacent properties, from the lighting standpoint.
Okay.
Can I comment on that as well? I think it's really reasonable, cereal, thank you for saying that, because the examples that you see on those are commercial, and so you don't have that overspray of light to, you know, residential application, per se.
So based on that, with respect to 1322 Sixth Avenue North, I recommend that this be approved with staff recommendations with the stipulating, stipulation that rather than a specific type of lighting specified, that the lighting not be visible from adjacent neighbors.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, 406, 408 Broadway.
All right, the building located at 406 Broadway, which is the three-story building on the right here, was constructed circa 2001 as an addition, as a side addition to the historic Victorian commercial building located at 408 Broadway, which is the four-story building on the left. That historic commercial building was previously home to Friedman Music and Loan Company. The building at 406 Broadway does not include an entryway, but rather is served by the storefront at 408 Broadway. The three-story building at 406 Broadway, as it was constructed in 2001, does not contribute to the character of Lower Broadway. So the request before you is to replace the first-story windows with operable doors to alter the height of the transoms on the storefront, and to replace the existing operable second-story doors with new operable doors at 406 Broadway. So no changes are proposed to the historic building at 408 Broadway, which is the four-story portion shown on the left. So there are no changes proposed for the third story of 406 Broadway. The existing brick third-story windows and second-story transoms will all remain. The applicant does propose to replace the existing casement operable doors on the second level with new casement operable doors. The existing railings, which aren't shown here, but you could see on the previous photo, they are to remain. No changes to the size of the second-story openings are proposed. Staff finds that the proposed second-story alterations are appropriate since the structure is not historic, and no changes are proposed to the dimensions of the existing doors and transoms. The applicant also proposes to replace the existing storefront windows on the first level with an operable aluminum frame glass window wall system. The proposal includes reducing the height of the existing transom by about half and increasing the height of the window openings. No changes to the bulkhead are proposed. So historically, transoms lined up with the top of the door opening. While the storefront, shown here on the left at 408, has been altered, an appropriate transom height is reflected with that reconstruction, so you'll see that there. And here are a couple of other examples of historic storefronts that also illustrate appropriate transom height, and these include on the left 101 Broadway and on the right 401 Broadway. So staff finds that replacing the existing storefront windows with a glass wall system on the first level could be appropriate as long as the plan maintains a transom and window height that is appropriate for the context. In this case, the window and transom height should be, should complement the historic structure at 408, which includes transoms that reflect an appropriate historical height. The proposed alterations to the storefront window and the transom height are inappropriate as the proposed transom height is not compatible with historic heights. Section 3.8.1 of the Design Guidelines states that, quote, "The relationship of the width to height of windows and doors and the rhythm of solids to voids in new buildings shall be visually compatible with the surrounding buildings." Altering the transom height on this addition will not be visually compatible with the storefront proportions on the historic building on the left. So for this reason, staff finds that the proposal does not meet Section 3.8.1 of the Design Guidelines. Staff finds that revising that proposal so that the height of the transom windows on the first level remain essentially the proportions they are, which are similar to the existing storefront transom windows at, on the historic portion at 408, would meet the design guidelines, and recommends this as a condition of approval. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the conditions that the height of the transom windows on the first story be the same as the existing transom windows, as well as those on the storefront of 408 Broadway, and that staff approve the windows and doors prior to purchase and installation.
Okay, thank you.
Quick clarification, I think I know the answer to this, but you know what happens when you assume the doors that are proposed for the second story, they'll swing in, correct?
Correct.
Okay, any more questions for staff? Okay, thanks, Melissa. Would the applicant like to come forward? State your name and address.
I do have one handout I'd like to distribute, if you don't mind. My name is Josh Hughes. I'm with Tuckett Architects, 410 Elm Street. If it'd also be possible to bring up the larger photo of the front of the building, I think that'd be helpful for argument I'm going to attempt to make. I'm not going to, this, what I passed out is just a, kind of a survey of different storefronts along Broadway. I'm not going to go into them in detail, but mainly just to illustrate that there's a lot of variety down there. Some are obviously historic storefronts, and some are infill buildings. But the proportions vary from one building to next, and some of them don't have transoms at all. So I'm kind of jumping into the argument, I would like to clarify that these two buildings are separate parcels. They, when the infill building was built in 2001, they were separate parcels, and they still remain to this day separate parcels, although they do share the same entry and the same operator. Obviously, the store guidelines require that storefronts on historic buildings match what was there historically, but in my opinion, they provide greater flexibility for infill buildings, just that they should be compatible with their surrounding buildings. The guidelines also say that it's desirable to distinguish them from historic construction. So I think some level of deviation is desirable, and it's kind of up to you guys to decide what amount of deviation. And with that, I'd like to propose another alternative, which would be to eliminate the transom altogether and just make the entire opening operable glass wall. If you look at the 408 building, the transom on the historic portion is not as pronounced as what you would see in many historic storefronts. And to me, that opening reads as one opening adjacent to either side of the door, and it's really the bulkhead above all of the openings that is the stronger element. So eliminating the transom and making that all operable glass wall, I think, would still be maintaining with the guidelines requirement that the opening dimensions, proportions, and rhythm of an infill building be consistent with the surrounding buildings. So again, just looking for a little bit more leeway, given that this is a new construction infill building. And with that, I'll refer back to you guys answering questions you may have.
So just to restate, eliminating the transom altogether in the 408 building?
In my opinion, from, I mean, just upon further consideration, that would, given that the 408 building is, the transom is so underpronounced, that would, I think, would be a good compromise to not having the exact alignment of the transoms and having those openings read consistent.
So if you eliminated those, how tall would those doors be?
About nine feet.
I also am kind of curious about some dimensions on either building. I want to, I don't want to make a convenient argument for one and then ignore the other, and I guess part of what I'm getting to is something you pointed out, which is the facades share a common entrance, and, you know, we don't have guidelines written for a specific instance or this specific case. And so I wonder if there were a door, because they're separate parcels, if there were a door added to one, would it look appropriate to not have a transom and have two narrow, very narrow doorways that are nearly 10 feet tall, or even a single door? Is that compatible? I'm having a hard time sort of separating that and allowing for tremendous variance if they share a common entrance, and segregating the two from each other. It's a dicey proposition, or maybe very, that's digging way down in the weeds, but I think this one, sort of, that's where we find ourselves.
I think if it, I mean, if it was a separate infill building, there are examples in that package, sorry, that it passed out, that, of storefronts that don't have transoms at all. I think, is it, Mellow Mushroom was recently constructed, it has no transom whatsoever above their storefront windows.
Sure, and point taken. Do you know if the, if the Wayne's coat at the bottom, if it matches between these two buildings? I mean, like, matches exactly? It looks close, but are they similar, same, exact?
I have not measured it, but based on the previous drawings for the building, I think that was the intent, I believe.
Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks, Josh, and you can have two minutes rebuttal if there's more comments. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay. No public hearing. No rebuttal, so I won't say anything. Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion?
I think I'm a little confused, our clarity here. So the applicant, is it the same number one that he's asking for on the recommendation? That the height of the transom windows on the first story be the same height as existing transom versus he just, I heard him say to change those into full glass doors? So that's, is that correct?
Full, yeah.
Okay, so that's not what's on this application?
No.
Okay.
I think the first-story description there is referring to the second floors. I'm sorry, I'm interrupting.
Okay. Did anybody need to clarification? You can come forward, I guess, and let's make sure. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Open public hearing, just--
Say that one more time, please.
So my understanding of that is that the transom on the first story would be the same height as the existing transom windows? Okay. Well, I thought that was referring to the transoms above the doorways on the front floor, on the second story. So we are keeping the transoms as they currently exist on the second story. At least, that's our proposition.
And you're asking for the full length on the first floor?
I think we would be happy with either reduced transom from what it currently is or a full height. I think the argument is the same to match it for either case.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Closed public hearing. Just for conversation, I guess, see what you guys feel like, but I feel like there's some rhythm that's been still happening, even though it's a new infill. So no transom, to me, bothers me to be more than even the reduced. I'd rather it stay reduced than no, but be interested to hear what the rest of the commissioners have to say about that.
Lynn, I think the argument that it's an infill building and not the same as the adjacent one is sort of countered by the treatment of that first floor that's been established, because the infill between the windows, the band above the windows, is all making it read as one building, even though the upper stories are clearly separate. So my sense is that the staff has made the right call on this, and I would move that we accept on 406, 408 Broadway, staff recommendations and approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 420 North 16th Street. Thank you. 420 North 16th Street, and this is an application to construct a new house on a vacant lot shown there. Just for reference, here are houses that make up the historic houses, that make up the immediate context. The top two images are the adjacent houses to the left and right of the vacant lot, and the bottom images are the two houses immediately across the street. These are all one and a half stories, as are other houses nearby, until you get about two blocks away, where you do start to see two-story houses. The new house will be 27 feet 6 inches tall and 33 feet 4 inches wide, reading from the front as a one or one and a half story form, similar to that of a minimal traditional mid-century house. The overall height and scale are compatible with the surrounding context. Here's the left side, the right side, and rear. I'll come back to those, but I do want to talk a little bit more about the adjacent or surrounding historic context first. Here are some more one and a half story houses on this street. These are all craftsman-style houses. Not that every house nearby is craftsman, but these are representative of one and a half story houses nearby, and these all have a change in materials from the first story to the upper story, which is common, but again, not all houses have a material change between floors. But when it's present, they typically correspond to the floor level. There's some material change there. The space between the top of the windows and that material change is typically 18 inches to 24, 30 inches above the window heads below or between the window heads and the material change. Here are some one and a half story Victorian houses. The second floor level is less clearly defined with these. There's not always a material change. And part of that ambiguity there, at least as it's perceived, is because Victorian houses have taller ceilings commonly and taller windows as well. But still typically, the floor level, the upper floor level, does correspond with the bearing of the, or essentially the eve line of the building. Victorian houses, craftsman houses, again, those are, probably make up the predominance of historic houses nearby, but those are just styles and really, you know, looking at forms across styles. You see a similar relationship between the window proportion and the wall height and the eve height on houses that are contributing to the historic character of the neighborhood. There's roughly floor levels there. So back to the current proposal. While the front reads as one story, on the sides, it takes more of a one and a half story appearance, and there are one and a half story houses in the context, but the composition of this is not typical of historic houses. For one, the second floor level is not distinguished on the exterior. Again, that's not always the case, that it would be, but here, that floor level, you know, approximately maybe two feet or so, two and a half feet above the window heads, but then you have a material change that's much higher. There doesn't appear to be a reason why the material change happens there, where on historic houses, there's clearly a logical reason for it to be where it's historically located. Part of the, or a secondary result of having a atypical location for the material change between levels is that you have windows, that the windows and sills actually extend down below into the first-story material, which is also not typical of the proportion and location of windows that you would see on historic houses. Moving on from that, the roof, you know, from the front, as I said, it has a side gabled form, typical of many historic houses, but here you have -- oh, we'll come back to that. At least, let me go to the porches first. The front porch. The front porch projects from the main massing of the building, but it has its sides enclosed. The right side is fully enclosed, the left side has a punched opening. There's also a sort of a congestion, a projection from the mass of the front facade into the porch area, which is not typical. Typically, you have open porches. You know, all those houses on the examples in the surrounding context have open porches that are sort of tradition, transitioned from the massing of the house, you know, to the public street in front. The proposed front porch doesn't share that relationship with historic houses because it doesn't share in the openness. Now to the roof. So the front slope of the roof has a 1412 pitch, which is very steep compared to historic houses in this area. The rear slope has an 812 pitch, and then the front porch has a 1212 pitch, which again is fairly steep, at least for front porches, compared to historic houses in the area. But moreover, it's not typical of buildings historically to have every section of roof have a different roof pitch. So that's, again, something staff found that really wasn't compatible with what you see on historic houses in the surrounding area. And summing up, staff did find the massing of the building, the height and width to be compatible, and those other proportions are exterior certainly important. But in summary, staff does recommend approval of the application to construct a new one and a half story house at 420 North 16th Street, with conditions that the exterior cladding is revised so the material change is more typical of one and one and a half story houses in the surrounding area, that roof colors and final selections of windows and doors is approved administratively, that the roofs of the building are revised to be more consistent with surrounding historic buildings, that window locations and proportions are revised to have more proportions, to have proportions more appropriate for first and second-story wall spaces, that the side walls and the projecting component of the front porch are removed so that it is more open in nature, and lastly, that driveway modifications indicated on the plans are further explained and approved administratively. With those conditions met, staff finds that this application would meet the Design Guidelines for new construction in the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. Okay. Thank you, Sean. Any questions?
Yeah, Sean, this is very obviously kind of a contemporary riff on a, you know, more traditional forms and the use of materials is, it was clear in the presentation, and the applicant, I'm sure, can, will clarify, there's, we've seen and approved contemporary, more contemporary designs for houses in the past, but a lot of the details where you might miter a corner and turn without a corner board, or you'll have, you know, terminations of materials, sometimes in the construction process, those things just end up becoming corner boards, and the illusion starts to revert back to something more traditional, which I think would not be as provocative as this is. And so there's, I guess, a question in here, one, or a question for you. The transition between the tongue and groove at the second level and that exposure to, as indicated in the drawings, to a straight lap siding is, yeah, that's, I think that's asking for a pretty tremendous amount of craftsmanship, for that not to have some sort of trim piece or something that's going to make all that, have some visual sense there. And then, on the right side of that elevation, it appears there's a corner board, but then on the left, there's, just from the drawing, it appears that the siding is terminating into not a corner board. Have you, are some of those, that some of those things, I guess, make sense to you? Or did you look that deeply, you think that deeply, or do you, does that, you follow me?
No, I wondered about that as well, with the vertical siding tying in or dying into the horizontal siding. That's a lot of, a lot of points to call, or, you know, without a trim band or something between there.
The applicant, I'm sure, can clarify. Those were some deeper things that, beyond just form and having a contemporary, you know, more contemporary interpretation of traditional roof form or roof slopes that, I think, would warrant at least discussion or clarification.
Yeah, maybe if there's somewhere a question with staff, maybe we'll bring the applicant up and she can address some of those. So if the applicant would like to come forward and state your name and address, one thing you might start with is--
Yeah, I'm Drew Sloss, 1408 Woodland, builder, future homeowner, and 13-year East Nashville resident. I'd like to point out that I think the third slide was presented up there was actually from an earlier revision. There has been a material change. This slide, there's been a material change on the projection of the front porch, as well as a hole punched through. So that was our, I think, our second round that we were working with staff on. One of the other, see, if you look at that projection, that has tongue and groove on that as well, which is what the other side would look like additionally. Just wanted to clarify that. So some of the project goals for this house, because we live on Woodland currently, is to build a smaller house. We've designed this to land under 1,000 square foot, as far as footprint goes. We're aiming to have all of our family bedrooms upstairs, since we have small children, and then we're aiming for a contemporary yet appropriate style. A brief history of this project. On May 11th, I met with staff and presented a contemporary one and a half story, front-facing gable with front porch projection as an inspiration picture, just to kind of kick off, like, here's where, here's where we're thinking. The response was they were cautiously optimistic, obviously pending final details and materials, but 28 feet is the average height on the block, a one and a half story, with a 31-foot historic home directly across the street being kind of an outlier. July 25th, we met again with historic, with a front-facing gable massing reworked to side end, to side end gables with front-facing porch due to massing issues. We were just ending up with a really long, narrow house, which was not the intention. So we had a six-foot knee wall on the front, and the staff response was this is a two-story house. August 3rd, Lynn, I met with historic again and showed a reworked roofline, creating asymmetry on the side, but allowed for needed upstairs living despite less desirable head clearance, greatly reducing front elevation appearance. The staff made some suggestions in the direction of a one-story roof pitch and also provided some feedback on windows, porch, and metal siding. So for our final submittal that you guys are looking at, we've added windows, removed the metal siding, in most cases to tongue and groove, added openings on porch walls. We also provide staff with a 14-page document attached with our application demonstrating previous historic staff justifications on one and a half and two-story heights and related contexts. You know, Lachlan Springs has many different heights in massing, short one-stories, tall two-stories, and infill homes even within the same block. We've met with our councilperson, shared our design with affected neighbors, have two letters of support, one from the neighbor directly across the street, and feel like we've worked diligently to relate to the overall context of the street, which actually was applauded by the Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Association letter, I believe you guys have received, at least regarding massing scale, height, rhythm, and spacing. They and our councilmen have expressed support for our position regarding the roof pitches as they are to the rear of the property. We have used historic forms but interpreted them with a contemporary presentation as our, as is our understanding of our guidelines. We've got many examples here of staff and commission-approved infill homes within Lachlan Springs that share similar non-typical characteristics to present to you today. The guideline standards have not changed, and we ask that you approve our design as submitted, and I believe Lynn can address your concerns as far as, like, how things are going to meet up.
Hi, my name is Lynn Taylor, residential designer, and I have these boards here because some of the concerns we didn't really get or understand till the, after, with the recommendations. And so number three, I think Drew mentioned, is incorrect. That was a prior revision to this. So number three elevation is real similar to this elevation as far as the opening and materials and the line. So in regards to number one concern, there has been many new infill approved with atypical cladding and materials. There are some materials never before used in the historic overlay, and there are some materials that I don't think have ever been found on a historic house. We would just like a fair and the same consideration as these people, designers, these guys on the house. There's a couple here that are mine, but 1419 Holly, skirtboard intersects around the midpoint of the window, of the front-facing window. 1521 Fotherland, steel post on the front porch, 10-inch exposure lap siding at the base of the house, tongue and groove cypress siding on the front porch. The duplex at 1312 Forest has skirtboards that go up and down all over the place, six-inch exposure lap siding on the bottom half of the house, and atypical skirtboard locations on that house. We have photographs of these. 1701 Russell, unusual siding detail and pattern with vertical battens throughout. 303 South 14th Street-- 303 South 14th Street has four-by-eight sheets of, I'm sorry, I should be taking a break right now. 303 South 14th Street, four-by-eight sheets of hardy panels are the main materials on the house. Now, that house is in East End, so I want to be clear about that, but I'm talking about the materials allowed in East Nashville historic overlays. In regard to number three concern, we have five different pitches overall. We need headroom in the upstairs and egress windows, and the only reason we did the dormers on the back is because of the egress and the headroom, because we lowered the knee wall based on what Sean had told us. 606 Holly Street has seven different roof pitches, none, no mention of that in their recommendation. 1805 Forest shows six different roof pitches, no mention of that either. 1521 Fotherland has an atypical extended front-facing gable with an exaggerated overhang. It must be around three feet out. 1408 Woodland has an asymmetrical front-facing gable with two different roof pitches. That's where Drew lives, that was one of my designs. 303 South 14th Street and 321 South 11th Street have atypical roof shapes. And one of the houses that we found, and I do not know the address, but it is in Lachlan Springs, had a unusual 2012 pitch on a bump out on the first floor on the left side of it, okay? Now, in regards to number four concern, we believe we satisfied the requirements and the guidelines with the number seven proportion and rhythm of the openings. The main house side gable, it's only 22 feet deep, I'm not sure how many more windows we could add. We did add some based on Sean's comments. We have filled the wall space with correctly sized windows on the front and the size gables of the house. Asymmetrical window placement and sizes have been allowed in this neighborhood, as you can see from the photographs. They're just to back up what I'm saying here. 1521 Fotherland, the right side, and this is a corner lot, the right side elevation has three different sizes of widths in those casement windows and a descending width together. Sorry about that. The duplex at 1312 Forest, the windows are different sizes and different mounting heights. 1303 Forest has atypical windows in size and layout. 1408 Woodland has several casement and awning windows with different size layouts and mounting. In regards to number five concern, three doors down from 16th Street is a historic Tudor with enclosed porch with punched openings on the side. Our front porch is open, it is not enclosed. There's only about six foot eight of wall, and now we have punches in that. It's very little wall area on that side, so it isn't enclosed. Our house design for the front porch is inspired by historic forms per the guidelines. The porch design is a mixture of a craftsman, front-facing gable, and Tudor porches from around the property. 1303 Forest has a larger interior projection on the shallow-depth porch. This, when they told us we couldn't do an interior porch projection, I didn't think there was any, but we found them, and this one right here is actually larger than ours that we're doing. So they have approved it and allowed it, and didn't make comments in their recommendations on that project. That was 1303 Forest. 1409 Russell has an interior projection into a shallow porch, front porch. 1406 Holly Street has an enclosed front porch on the second floor. We have not seen any of this on historic houses in the neighborhood. Again, there's photographs of this. 321 South 11th Street has an interior projection on its front porch and includes a water feature. That front porch, that front elevation, isn't anywhere else in the neighborhood. Now, that is an East End house. And, let's see, you were talking about that material change. That is vertical siding that will go overlap the, Ben, it will overlap at about an inch, there will be no caulking. The thickness of a hardy plank board is about an eighth of an inch. Once it gets to that point, we would like to leave that clean. We do not want to move that line. I can't tell you how far that line is up, that line is just where it needs to be design-wise, as far as I'm concerned.
And my question was, so you'll have ingrained exposed at the bottom of that tongue and groove, essentially that's the detail.
It's all gonna be painted, I believe.
Well, I don't, I mean, I just want to understand it, I don't, I'm not questioning it's...
No, the goal would to not be having, and I think you would have to break, sorry. I think you'd have to Z-break flashing underneath and around, and around it.
So there'll be, in lieu of even a three-quarter inch piece of trim that would close that, we just want a real thin line, you know, Z to close that off, so you're not seeing ingrained and it's sort of breaking apart?
I'd originally, I'd forgotten about that. I'd originally talked about a metal drip edge that will be the same color as the wood and the paint and everything.
Okay.
I do durability details on my drawings, so.
Okay. And I just was curious to understand, a lot of times what we'll see, and my questions are, we won't see, the design will maybe turn the corner and have, you know, more contemporary, harder, more expensive construction to build, and then corner board suddenly gets lapped up on the house and some trim and so forth.
Yeah, I think about all those details of my houses.
No doubt.
And we were trying to keep a clean, modern design. We don't want to move the skirtboard where it's always at on a craftsman. As you can see, there are many houses in the neighborhood that they did not enforce that on. We don't want to do it, we don't want to make it look like a craftsman. The only reason the two roofs are different pitches, because they asked us to bring it down to a one-story. At our third meeting, you know, Sean started talking about a one-story. And so we're like, we have to get headroom up in the second floor, or we just need to go ahead and do a one-story. However, we also, in our research, found a few houses that are two-story, new houses on blocks with no one-story, I mean, no two, no historic two-story houses. So we feel we could even do a two-story here if we really wanted to, but based on all the other two stories that have been allowed in the neighborhood. But my client here, he just wants to keep a shorter, smaller footprint home for his family.
Okay. Ben, before, did you get all your questions answered?
Oh, I don't want to, my questions can be outside of the time that the applicant has, I don't want to judge.
Oh, yeah, we're outside of it anyway, so, but if you have questions, go ahead. Yeah, I do, just, and these are follow-up, not challenging, these aren't challenges, Lynn, to what's drawn, it's just an understanding, or that it's compliant or not compliant. I just want to understand, as we consider it, I don't want to project what I think it is onto what your design is, and could you, I'm looking specifically, oh, it's not, it's the slide after the front elevation.
It's the one they were drawing.
Yeah, so it just looks like there's a, there's a corner board indicated on the lap siding that extends, you know, even up, there's that little bit of bearing, or that little bit of exposed, where it transitions from the horizontal siding to the vertical siding. It looks like a corner board runs from bottom to top there. And then, as you turn the corner, will there also be a small corner board there, or is that detailed?
On the front side?
Well, on the, this would be on the rear side of the house.
The corner boards run all the way up to the eaves.
And they would be on both sides of that.
So the material has a complete dead end.
Okay, and that would be right and left side of this drawing?
All sides on this will have a corner board.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Or if you look at the back one, and I'm sorry, if you look at the very backside of that, I believe it might be a sliver, and so it comes out, so the material can die into it. We did the same detail on 1408 Woodland, and so it is, you are, we are capable of building it that way.
Sure, and so that would be a three-quarter inch exposure, or whatever the width of the board is on this side, and it's very thin.
It's just a tad.
And the other is, yeah, I'm following you, and I think I understand the detail, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't misreading it. The, and then, is there just a very narrow three-quarter inch trim around the window opening at the porch on both sides? Is that also correct?
That would be a one-by-eight flat to go right up against that and trim it out.
Trim it out, sure.
We did that on the three houses at 16th and Bosco. Those openings were done that way, too.
And I think, I follow you, and I think, so I'm reading the drawings as to...
One more thing about that roof, I mean, we originally started with it the same pitch, and we had a, I think we had a little window above the front window, and that wasn't, they didn't like that. So that's when the roof got caulked down, and there's no little two-by-two window above the front windows. We can always add a window to the left side of the door, front door, because it does look like a space I just noticed actually today.
And there any, yeah, final question before, I may have missed this on the notation, does the window have a pretty standard casing, like a casing detail but just narrower?
It will have a casing detail. We would like to do a more narrow.
Two and a quarter or something?
It doesn't have to be brick molding, it could be a two-by-two, or, but I will detail that out, and we'll do metal drip edge on the top. But we would like a slimmer, again, this is only 22 feet, I mean, 22 feet is not very much.
So more contemporary interpretation of what would otherwise be a one-by-four.
So we would like to use a narrow than the typical one that is.
Great, thank you.
All right, thanks, Lynn. Thanks, everybody. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing an enclosed public hearing, discussion, good questions, Ben?
Lynn, I've got, I said it was my last question, I was, it wasn't.
One more question for you, Lynn.
I wanted to, I want to understand sort of the innies and outies on the front porch. In reading, I'm looking at the plan and sort of the, if we flip between the front elevation, so the, on the left side of the front-facing porch, the vertical siding sort of runs up, that's in the same plane, it runs up and creates a gable form in the second floor. And it's the, so that's out at, let's say, two feet out from the face, whatever it is. Is the part that's just to the right of that, where we go from vertical to horizontal siding, is that out further, or is it flush or back in?
I've got this pointer that has a laser thing on it, can you look, can you see the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, you see this plane right here where the front door is?
That's back in flush.
That's the same plane as this. Then this steps out some, and then this steps out even further. If you look on the second floor, you might be able to see it a little bit better, you see the dotted lines?
And I saw that, so...
And there's a little alcove right here, and here's where we could add another, like, two-by-two window.
And then the whole frame of the whole outside comes out the furthest, so that one-by-six or whatever that depth is.
It's a one-by-eight.
One-by-eight comes all the way out.
All the way up and out, and this, this is why we say the porch isn't enclosed.
Sure, then it's crystal clear to me now, thanks.
Put you on the spot a little bit, Cyril, but this seems like it's such an architectural thing. Can you give maybe some of your comments to this, some of your first blushes?
Yeah, there's a lot going on in that house, I mean, and it depends, I'm just a lot of that. It is, you know, you do want to have a lot of constraints.
When you have a house that's, that's small, that you're trying to get a lot of program into, you know, I see where the staff has come from, I'm still in the process of thinking through it, so I think more discussion will help out, so.
posed the question of, just, you know, I should go right to the guidelines to see what your, both of you, I mean, everybody's opinion is, as far as, it is new, I mean, it's, it's new infill. I mean, many of the guidelines, it seems like it might actually meet from my, you know, just the roof, some of the roof pitches, but some of the, the actual scale, I think, is, what do you guys feel like about the scale? It feels like the scale might be right for this infill.
I find, I find the scale is appropriate to the neighborhood, and, you know, it's a reasonably scaled, more so than a lot of applications we see have. So I don't, I don't find the scale as distinctively different or jarring or greatly from the surrounding, you know.
It's actually refreshing to see something at this scale.
I'm just, another thing, too, almost like some of the changes that were brought up might fit it better because it's new infill, you know, because if it took on a different character, it might cha, you know what I mean, then the whole character changes if we put too many of the, some of these on it. What do you guys feel about that?
Muddy, the contemporary.
Like, yeah, muddy, kind of like, oh, wait, well, it was contemporary, but now I'm trying not to be, but...
I think, based on the applicant's response and a track record of thoughtful consideration of details, whether you like contemporary interpretation or not, it's not like it's a single-line drawing where it's just gonna get built, whoever builds it, it's gonna get built however they choose. I see these things as intentional. Now, whether the staff feels like they're appropriate or not, or they meet the guidelines is another question. I don't think it's for lack of thoughtfulness or skill that this is put together, and I think it certainly is, as a contemporary interpretation has been, you know, a certain, contemporary rules have been applied to try to make something that is distinctly different and purposefully different. I'm recalling, you know, and we oftentimes, or we've reviewed cases in the past where, you know, the culmination, it's not any individual one thing that we've approved in the past, the culmination of things might cause the staff to evaluate something one way or the other, and I wasn't sure what we were gonna, here in the presentation today, certainly reviewing the application beforehand, I saw the points being made, but I'll say, I know I've been a part of approving some of these details on previous projects, where there was some discussion, but, and on their own, they just, they were certainly distinctly new construction, and they were distinguished from something that was historic. And the different roof pitches is one of those that I just, I don't find as causing me great consternation. And we don't review paint color, but I don't think that in and of itself would make it out of place necessarily.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
There was another comment that we got, public comment through email, actually from the councilmember, that, you know, because those roof pitches are different in the rear, that it's not as obvious, you know, to where it's inconsistent with the surrounding structures. So that made some sense as well.
Maybe to, just to move it on from a conversation piece about the exterior cladding, more typical, this is one, I'd be curious to hear what you guys all think about that, but it, like I said, once again, kind of back to your point, Ben, it's almost like if you look at the, look at each thing individually, it's one thing, but when you look at the culmination, it's kind of another. So I'm not as put off by the cladding being different because of the type of building, what this really is by itself, but I'm curious of what the rest of commissioners may say about that.
So it doesn't have to be that five-inch reveal kind of guideline, does it or does it not, since it's a different kind of cladding?
It's, well, it's, what they're, during Sean's, he talked about the different kind proportions of it. That was more of what, I believe, if you want to see, you want to show that up, Sean, your diagram that showed it, but that's, I think that's what number one meant. Yeah, those...
I'll just clarify...
That line there is a subfloor.
I didn't see it.
That was it. And then the material change happens there.
I was just getting clarified, it wasn't the materials themselves, it was just where the change was happening.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
Say something.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, and then, I mean, the material change on this one, again, doesn't cause me consternation, as Ben said, for a different thing, just simply because such a, there's such a, I mean, from the different ones that we saw, you know, not just the applicants, but on the, our own presentation, just there's such a mix of things in that neighborhood, it seems like, you know, some are the style without any material change at all, some are style with the material change, and yes, when you do have a material change, I guess it's more common to have it on the floor level, but, you know, if this is, if this is an interesting take on, you know, a very modest-sized home, and, you know, if that's what the designer, you know, thinks, thinks might look best for this size home, then, I mean, I just, it doesn't personally bother, bother me in this instance, since there is such a mix in the neighborhood, and not everything is exactly the same.
Sure, so...
And as you know, since, well, wherever you're going, I'm gonna have to go.
Yeah, so I move approval with the staff's recommendation on 420 North 16th Street, taking exception to the requirement number, number one, with the... taking exception to the requirement number, number one, with the, you know, noted exception here, that this is a contemporary house that is taking forms and is distinctly different, but I don't find that that's, it's been approved and I don't, I, in, in both examples given in, in the presentation here, but in things we've previously approved before, I think it's a cue to, you know, the passerby that this is new, many of those cues on this project, and so I don't find that as contrasting greatly with, with other examples in the neighborhood. And number three, I think that the front facing gable is, while steep, is proportional and, and doesn't, well, let me contrast it, it doesn't contrast so greatly that this is an ostentatious house, or will look out of place in, in its proportion. And also, number four, I think the combination, the composition of windows is intentional, and there are sufficient number of openings in the composition of each of the elevations that don't create large expanses of, of material, and they go to making the whole piece read as a contemporary riff on, on, you know, some, with some traditional form elements. I'm not sure what the, I think some clarity can be given by the applicant on the driveway modifications. And then finally, on, on item five, I, I find that the porch is, by its nature, and with the two openings on either side, as clarified by the applicant, is open enough in nature, and again, referring back to the contemporary nature of this application in total, it, I find it meets the guidelines for an open, per, open porch.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Robin, did I give enough information for you? Okay, a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
What's the motion?
Approval.
Oh, okay, cool.
I'll clarify, it's approval with.
She tried to give it a little bit more detail, but.
With the conditions that the roof colors and final selection of windows and doors shall be approved administratively and the driveway modifications are approved administratively, the typical.
Absolutely, thank you.
Just from an earlier part, we have been going for two hours, does anybody need to take a quick restroom break, or? Anybody else?
Go ahead.
Stand up? Or if no one needs to else take, you want to take a stand break?
Oh, no, I'm just, I don't need a break.
Okay, we don't lose quorum, so I was gonna keep going unless anybody else wants to take a break.
Keep going.
Okay? You two, okay? All right, all right, we're gonna keep going then, we're just, since we don't lose quorum, we're gonna keep moving. I'll give you guys another chance later to, yeah, okay, 1126 Shelton Avenue.
It's me again. Okay, 1126 Shelton Avenue is a vacant lot. It was, this overlay went into effect very recently, and just before the adoption of the overlay, this lot was rezoned, SP allowing three, three, up to three detached dwellings with the setbacks and footprints of the buildings essentially determined by the SP. So, the site plan sort of was inherited along with the overlay. And this is actually the second application we've reviewed for this lot, same applicant, but they submitted something two months ago and then deferred, but it's essentially a new design, so we're treating it like a new application. It is an application to construct three houses on the, the three lots is provided by the, or determined by the set plan, site plan with the SP. And the, just for, for purposes of this, I'm calling them, unit one being to the top of this image, facing Shelton Avenue, units two and three facing Windsor Avenue. And unit one is a one and a half story, 26 feet tall, 36 feet wide for the primary mass, with a wing, gabled wing on the, on the side, extending the width to 40 feet. The width, the height is appropriate, the width is appropriate largely because this lot is 67 feet wide. Units two and three are similar designs, but one will be mirrored from the other, also 26 feet tall, also 32 feet wide, and 36 feet deep. All of the buildings have similar materials, stone columns with wooden uppers, split face block foundation, clap, cement fiber clapboard siding and Borden battened siding, asphalt shingle roof. Staff, as always, request to review, review the roof color and the window and door selections. That's it, staff recommends approval of the three infill houses at 1126 Shelton Avenue with the following conditions, that the foundation height shall be consistent with adjacent historic buildings, to be verified by staff during construction, that the window and door selections are approved by staff, that the roof color, or colors are approved by staff, that the location of driveway, driveways, walkways and porch stairs shall be administratively approved, and that HVAC units and other apparatuses shall be located on the rears, rear facades of the buildings or behind the midpoint on non-street facing facades. Meeting those conditions, staff finds that this proposal meets the guidelines for construction in the Englewood Place Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Okay, thank you Sean, would anyone else like to speak regarding this project? I mean.
Yeah, I've got, I guess this is a question for staff, make sure I'm, I'm seeing this right, it appears that unit one, the left elevation shown on, on unit one here doesn't jive with the site plan. You've got a returning, and I think the drawings may be confused, you, the front is showing a returning porch and, and that doesn't look like it returns, you know, the.
Uh, yeah, it actually, yeah, I think the.
But I think in the staff packet, Windsor one does show a returning porch, which gets to my question, and I applaud the applicant for putting a corner house on a corner, always, always helpful when that happens. I know we've had some discussion before about which is the front door, and I just, I want to make sure the staff is satisfied that, you know, that it looks like, hey, this is the front door, not which, which door do I take the mail to, or where should, where should I go and knock? We've had extensive conversation on that before, and I don't know if it's warranted here, I just was curious about making sure that we don't, you know, they don't, they get what it's intended, I don't think it's a big deal, I just wanted to make sure we were, we were good with it.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, please, I guess referred to, follow the plans in the published recommendation. I put, I mixed up a, a left elevation there, I think, for Windsor one and two slash three. Yeah, I was confident that the front on Shelton would read as more front.
Front, mm-hmm. Great.
Okay, thanks Sean, is applicant here, would you like to come forward? Nope? Okay, open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing an enclosed public hearing? Discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval based on staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sorry.
I know, I could feel it.
You know, you know, you know, you could count on me. Let me look back at, at the staff's recommendation, this, this is one I've, I've been, I've harped on before, the little bathroom transom by themselves, windows for proportion, is that a, is that in the staff recs to, I know it's a tough detail, but.
We typically are not fond of those because the proportion and rhythm is not compatible with typical historic houses.
Nor am I.
They did very appropriate with the window proportions on the front, and we, we made sure essentially that they kept a fairly compatible proportions on the front halves of the building, the rears are, you know, sort of not much scrutiny on the rear, but then because of the situation that they, not that they were given, but that they, they bought into, but it's three, three houses on one lot, which is not typical, it was, you know, already sort of what you're getting in terms of privacy and things were, and visibility were going to be different than a standard house, or standard lot that we would review. So, the rear halves of the side elevations, we, we sort of extended a little bit of that latitude as well.
I'll follow up with that question, so on the corner house, there's, that's not showing on either side, right? Without looking at the plans?
Without looking at the plans?
I mean, in detail as you have, that corner house.
The two street facing elevations of the corner house, both have very appropriate window proportions, twice as tall as they are wide.
Good, great.
And I think for Windsor one, because of the site plan we inherited, that one actually sticks out, you, you will see that coming up the street and up the sidewalk, and it looks like, I mean, that has a, you know, what appears to be, even if it's back of the house, there, there's some window openings there, so it doesn't look awful.
Mr. Chairman, could I amend my motion to, to reflect that the staff review of the window and door selections be expanded to include proportions of windows as appropriate?
Okay, we have amended motion, we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, amended motion carries, now the motion, the original motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 3926 Cambridge Avenue. Is that okay, Robin?
Okay, so, in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the addition, finding that the addition's height, scale and roof form do not meet the design guidelines, and specifically sections 2B1A, 2B1B, 2B1E and 2B2 of the Cherokee Park Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay design guidelines. And then for the outbuilding, staff recommends approval with the condition that staff approve the materials of the windows, doors and roof color prior to purchase and installation, finding that the outbuilding does meet section 2B1 of the design guidelines. So, my apologies about the mic, let me know if you have any questions.
That's okay, I think we were hearing you okay, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Doug.
I believe Robin said that maybe we had gotten some feedback, I don't know if it's people watching on television or somewhere else couldn't hear as they were watching.
We've gotten it quite a bit, so please use your, turn your mics on, please lean into them.
Next time, I'll make sure. Okay, any, any questions for Melissa?
Oh, and just a note, I do believe that you did receive an email yesterday of public comment on this case.
Okay, all right, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward, state your case and your name and address?
Hello, I'm Van Pond, I'm the architect, 2929 Sidco Drive. We're back this month, thank you all for your time, we appreciate it. We've worked with our clients, Tufik and Christian Assad, and several members of your commission's staff, taking into account the considerations last month and your comments that were made about this project. I'd like to highlight one piece of the staff recommendation that Melissa brought up, about the location and size of the easement that crosses the property and effectively bisects it. It is an unusual condition, it does present something of a hardship in that easements typically, in the vast majority of cases, exist along property lines of the sides and rear of a property. This does just go right down the dead middle of it, it does present a hardship for working through a design process on this project, as we talked about last month. That's what I've got to say about that. For this month's revised supplemental, we proposed a two-foot high ridge raise in combination with addition that is slightly wider and taller by one foot than that ridge raise. We took the commentary you all gave us last month to heart, and in part of, part of doing that, last month's addition had a knee wall and a forward facing dormer massing showing from the front. We looked at that and really thoroughly redesigned based on your commentary and based on the idea that the guidelines want additions to defer and to not over-impact the visual composition of the house from the front. Our addition's footprint is 1,600 square feet, that includes about 350 square feet of porches. The house next door at 3924, as we talked about last month, has a addition square foot, footprint of 2,000 square feet, so we're actually less than that, and that house was smaller originally. For the exterior massing this month, the low eve of our addition aligns with the interior bearing height of the existing house as it faces forward, we have designed this in a manner that the whole of the addition is a side facing gable with step downs massing to the sides. If you could go one more, so you can see kind of the addition has actually. But we do need you all to give us some consideration on the massing component, which we have drastically changed. One thing, and it's not just self-aggrandizement, the last page of the packet I handed you out, this project in 2011, the house next door, 3924, which is a very large-scale addition, as you can see, was given a preservation award because it was a sensitive way to add to a small house. I don't have the comments exactly, but that's what it was, that's why it was given that award. I'm going to give the microphone over to the homeowner. Thank you very much.
My name is Tofik Assad. My address is 3926 Cambridge Avenue. And along with my wife, Kristen Assad, we're the current owners of the house that you're considering today. My wife regrettably cannot come because she's at home with her four-week-old daughter. Before I say a few words, I want to thank the commission and the staff for allowing us to come here today before you. I also want to thank Van, our incredible architect, our neighbor Gil Lackey, who you will hear from shortly, and other neighbors who wrote in letters of support to the commission. A mention was made to an email sent yesterday, there was also an email sent today from our neighbor, Bob Green, so at least two that I know of. So, you're being asked today to consider this proposal objectively, and Van laid out some objective facts, and I'm going to fill in some of the subjective context. So, my wife and I moved from Boston four years ago, and like many northern transplants, a three-bedroom house, which is the house that we originally bought, sounded enormous relative to our one-bedroom apartment in Boston. However, life happens, and we've been blessed to have two children, one that I just told you was born four weeks ago. And so, we were growing out of our current house. And so, we started to look for larger houses in our neighborhood, preferably, that could accommodate our growing family. And so, what I didn't mention is that this house, this three-bedroom house that we currently live at, is 3927 Cambridge Avenue, so across the street from this proposal at 3926 Cambridge Avenue. We approached our neighbor about purchasing our house, and after some back and forth, eventually we came to some mutually agreeable terms. What I also failed to mention is that the back slope of the original roof has a gigantic hole in it, presumably from a large tree branch that fell on the house a decade or so ago. As you can imagine, there's an enormous amount of water damage in the house, there is actually no ceiling in the kitchen, there's actually exposed rotten wood beams. The night before we closed on the house, the previous seller texted us that the toilet fell through the subflooring in the bathroom. So, most banks and insurance companies, and actually just general people who we talked to, dissuaded us from buying this house. It was a struggle, it was a back and forth, but we love our street enough that we felt that we had to. And actually, it seemed like a win-win to us. Our neighbor who currently, or former neighbor, who obviously couldn't take care of the house, who was living in what I would describe as an uninhabitable condition, got to walk away with fair market value for her house. We got to buy a house on our street that we love, on a bigger lot, and we were able to build something that we would call our dream house. Finally, this 1920's beautiful bungalow, which has now fallen under significant disrepair, would be able to be restored to its original beauty by community members, myself and wife. So, we chose Van Pond as our architect very carefully, because he's actually done three houses on our street before us. We'd be number four, and several others in our neighborhood. We're presenting to you now for the second time, and so, we were here last month, and I came personally, because I wanted to hear the concerns of the staff and the concerns of the commission, and I, you know, honestly wasn't that upset when you guys said it was disapproved, because I knew that we could work with the staff, based on the guidance of the commission, to find a compromise that was mutually agreeable. We emailed with the staff, met in person with the staff in the interim, and, you know, I think that the meetings went very well, and we took the requests and recommendations in earnest into our new revision. I must admit, after our last conversations with the staff, I was actually confident that they would agree with us on our revised renovation plan, but here we are today. So, I just want to say that we are not asking, in our opinion, for anything out of proportion to renovations allowed in our neighborhood, let alone our street, let alone our immediate next-door neighbor, as Van has mentioned about the house at 3924 Cambridge Avenue. So, lastly, our two-and-a-half-year-old son heard me say once, "It's really sad what happened to this beautiful old house." And as only a toddler can do, he heard "sad" and said, "Oh, this is the sad house." And so, we've kind of jokingly been referring to this as the sad house. And then, we asked him, "What should we do about it?" And his response was, "Make it happy." And so, that's kind of what we're here to do. It's toddler's logic, but that's really what we're here for. And so, thank you for your time, thank you for your careful consideration, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the applicant at this time? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding, Dick, please state your name and address?
Hey, I'm Gil Lackey. I'm their next-door neighbor, 3924 Cambridge Avenue. I wrote down some notes, and for fear of losing my train of thought, I'd like to just read it. So, my wife and I and our children, I have two kids, and we live next door to Tofik and Kristen's property, and we have lived down the street from them for several years. Being the closest neighbor to this proposed addition, it will be the property that's most affected. Not only are we in favor of the proposed addition, but we've been ecstatic about it throughout the whole process. The whole street has been talking about it for a long time. Tofik was extremely generous about the condition of this house right now. It's, it's a mess, it's an eyesore, and we're grateful for someone with his, I don't know, conscientiousness to do a great job restoring it and making it look beautiful. I know you have a huge responsibility to do what's right and to find solutions to the challenging properties like this one, and I know my saying, my family and our neighbors are in favor of the proposed addition, might not be enough to sway you, so if I may, please allow me to explain why I think it's fair and that you should allow the addition as proposed. So, my property, and I wish you could see it next to their property, and the story behind my property is the comparable, the comparable to end-all comparables for Kristen and Tofik's property. I wanted to start a family but didn't want to move. I had a tiny 925-square-foot house with a sewer easement running across the middle of the backyard, the exact same one that Tofik's dealing with. So, it was quite challenging. Your staff rejected two sets of plans, and I came in here on a whim one day, even though I didn't have anything.
I'm sorry, the two months are up. Are you on your last point?
I just have a couple more, is that okay?
Oh, well, we probably better. I thank you, I think we got the, your.
Can I get to the last paragraph?
I'm sorry. We, I appreciate it, sorry about that.
One thing I'd like to add is that you let us, you guys designed it for us, you let us make it taller and wider, so I think they should too. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing closed public hearing, discussion?
I don't remember what last month, I mean, I remember this, this case last month, but I don't remember the exact changes or anything, but I do remember last month having the initial reaction of, "This is out of scale, this is far too big, you know, it's taller and wider, you know, completely, completely not for it." And, I mean, honestly, I don't quite have that same reaction this month. I mean, I do understand that's still staff recommendation, and that it is still taller and wider, but I think, you know, again, last month, it doesn't matter, but I think they've, you know, Van, and then I thank the applicant and Van for working with the staff and, you know, using our comments, and, you know, it's come to a place that, with the sewer easement, and I know it's still, you know, it's not quote-unquote "a hardship," because you could just build a smaller house, but for what they want, on this particular lot, it does sit back further. The immediate context is another house that we approved that is also larger and wider. I just personally, I like the new design, and again, I do think it'll make this lot look better overall than it has in a while.
I definitely do applaud the applicant for, you can tell there was a lot of work that was put in to make it more approvable, plausible, but I still, I still do have some concerns about the, you know, the parts that are out of it. I do realize the site has some conditions, but the sites do have conditions. Let's see, I was trying to get back to that. So, as I did before, maybe I can hear some kind of comments about, like, it's definitely, the things that it does have, the width being more, does, do we feel like we have a, let me hear any more comments about that, I guess I should say.
I think, you know, in reading or looking at the guidelines for additions, they're pretty specific in what's encouraged, or what's allowed, I'll say that. And I think, if I recall correctly, that this lot width would permit a side addition, and certainly not, I don't want to boil down staff's analysis and the time they spent on this to the either-or argument, but certainly, I think that's something that made, was not insignificant, I guess, in their analysis, that it's, you know, it's 12 inches, it's both wider and taller. I think it complies on the width by allowing for, you know, for a wider elevation. It appears, I feel like it's dimensioned on the drawings, the distance back from the front where they pick up the additional 12 inches is quite significant. In other words, it's set back, it sets back from the street.
Far enough.
A long ways. Whether it's far enough or both should be allowed, I'm open for other opinions or further discussion. But I think it certainly does, you know, it, the house is, the applicant's van has paid close attention to, to, 2B-2A, where it's sort of, you know, the house is preserved on the front and side additions kind of as is, and maintains its, you can tell by looking at it that it, this is what the house was, albeit it's a very significant addition to the back.
Do you have any feedback maybe on the height at all, or?
I do appreciate the changes and improvements that have happened since the last submission, especially moving the right side, that addition back so far on the lot. Having gone past this lot and looked at it, you know, I don't think it will appear all of massive, it won't be as large as the house adjacent to it that we did approve. It is a unique situation with this lot with, you know, and although it is a deep lot, as was mentioned, the front of the house really sets that setback, so the addition has to happen between where the front of the house is and where the, where the sewer easement is. So, it does give some restriction from that standpoint.
Any other comments, or? You guys gonna let this half? I'm just checking. I'm just checking. Anyone like to craft a motion, or any more discussion about some of the, any of the other concerns of the staff? I think they actually may have, you guys talked about it, but. Height, scale, and roof, no, we've got them all.
I think based on the discussion that I've heard among the commissioners here, and what we've heard from the applicant and the staff, that I move for approval, both of the, of the house and of the outbuilding.
Just because, all right, let me have a motion, do I have a second? Because we're going against staff recommendation, just, do you mind being clear on the, I think we can do this discussion, just on the specific things that you feel like it does, it does meet?
Sure. I will say that although the scale is much larger than the existing neighborhood, that it's compatible with some other projects that we have approved, it is constrained because of the location of the front of the house, the setback, and the sewer easement that transverses the site. I think that the location of both the side addition and the roof raise much further back on the site will make them not very visible from the front of the house, and I think the design as presented preserves the front of the house and the appearance that faces the street.
Does that meet everything you need, Robin?
It might be helpful to have some of our typical conditions, maybe not with this applicant, because he knows all this, but final approval of windows, doors, roof color, location of HVAC, maybe. Sorry? But, and approval in the masonry.
Can that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Can we, yeah, okay. Instead of him restating that, can he say the typical as stated by staff?
So, second the amended motions?
Okay, thank you. I'm going to just call for one vote, though, if that's, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 1211, yeah, we have one that didn't approve. 1211 7th Avenue North.
1211 7th Avenue North is an application to construct infill on a vacant lot in Germantown. Here's the site plan. The two lots on either side of 1211 7th Avenue North are vacant.
You guys going to let this half? Just checking, I'm just checking. Anyone like to craft a motion, or any more discussion about some of the, any of the other concerns of the staff? I think they actually may have, you guys talked about it, but. Height's coming, roof, no, we've got them all.
I think based on the discussion that I've heard among the commissioners here and what we've heard from the applicant and the staff, that I move for approval, both of the house and of the outbuilding.
Just because, let me have a motion, do I have a second? Because we're going against staff recommendation, just, do you mind being clear on the, I think we can do this discussion just on the specific things that you feel like it does meet?
Sure. I will say that although the scale is much larger than the existing neighborhood, that it's compatible with some other projects that we have approved, it is constrained because of the location of the front of the house, the setback, and the sewer easement that transverses the site. I think that the location of both the side addition and the roof raise much further back on the site will make them not very visible from the front of the house, and I think the design as presented preserves the front of the house and the appearance that faces the street.
Does that meet everything you need, Robin?
It might be helpful to have some of our typical conditions, maybe not with this applicant, because he knows all this, but final approval of windows, doors, roof color, location of HVAC, maybe. Sorry? But approval in the masonry.
Can that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, can we, yeah, okay. Instead of him restating that, can he say the typical as stated by staff?
So second amendment motion?
Okay, thank you. I'm going to just call for one vote, though, if that's, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 1211, yeah, we have one that didn't approve. 1211 Seventh Avenue North.
1211 Seventh Avenue North is an application to construct infill on a vacant lot in Germantown. Here's the site plan. The two lots on either side of 1211 Seventh Avenue North are vacant. The nearest historic houses are 1207 and 1215, which are both two lots to the north and south respectively. 1207 Seventh Avenue North sits approximately three to four feet from the property line, so it's pretty close to that front property line. 1215, which is to the north, sits about 12 feet from the front property line. The applicant here is proposing to situate the infill so that it's two-story front bay, you can kind of see that at the front, will be about 11 feet 6 inches from the front property line, and the main wall of the house will be 15 feet from the front property line. Staff finds that the proposed front setbacks are appropriate given the context, but because they weren't included on the site plan and we had to guesstimate those from Metro Maps, we will want to approve the front setback when it's staked and also will want to see a site plan that includes those front setbacks with more accurate measurements than what we have. Other than that, the base, the infill meets all base zoning setbacks. The proposed infill will be two stories. Staff finds that a two-story form to be appropriate, as the historic house formerly on the lot was two stories, that was demolished sometime before the 19, late 1970s. And also, there are several two-story houses across the street. The proposed infill has a maximum height of 35 feet above the foundation line and 37 feet above grade, so there is a two-foot foundation. The design guidelines limit the new, the height of new single-family infills to 35 feet. The commission has interpreted this guideline to be, to limit the height to 35 feet from grade, so it doesn't explicitly say that in the design guidelines, but that's how it's been interpreted in the past. So staff therefore recommends that the height of the infill be reduced by two feet so that it is no more than 35 feet from grade. The proposed infill level width of 37 feet, which is appropriate, the primary cladding material will be brick, and staff finds that all the known materials meet the design guidelines and have been approved before in the district. The front porch, you can see, is flat-roofed and it contains a railing for a deck, that railing is uncovered, and because of that, staff finds it to be appropriate and to meet the design guidelines. The dormer on the left elevation will contain an open balcony rather than walls in a window. Staff has found, or I'm sorry, the commission in the past have found dormer balconies to be appropriate when the dormers have been appropriately scaled. In addition, staff finds this dormer to be appropriate because it is not on the front facade, so it'll be less visible from the street, although it will be visible from the street, but it won't be as prominent because it's on the side facade. Here are the two side façade. The double window openings are not drawn to have four to six inch mullions in between them, so we'll ask that under construction that they have four to six inch mullions in between the double and paired windows. And here are some context photos, so the two photos at the top are the nearest historic houses. Again, these are two lots away from the lot in question. And the houses on the bottom are the two-story houses that are across the street on this block of Seventh Avenue North. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with the conditions that the front setback, staff approve the front setback when it's staked, the finished floor height be consistent with finished floor height of adjacent houses, the infill be lowered in height, so it's no taller than 35 feet from grade, the paired window openings have four to six inch mullions, staff approve the windows, doors, a brick sample, roof shingle, color and texture, the material design of the front porch railing and the Juliet balconies on the sides, staff approve the materials of the front walkway, porch floor and porch steps, staff approve the HVAC location, and finally, since this is a preservation overlay where we do review all permanent landscape features, we want to make sure that we review and approve all permanent landscape features, including fences, walls, pavers, walkways, et cetera. So with that, staff finds that the project meets the Germantown design guidelines.
Okay, thanks Melissa. Any questions from Melissa?
Quick one, Melissa, on the height, if we look, since it's not on the drawings, would that be to the peak of the roof, or is that measured to?
It's measured from the grade to the very tippy-top peak of the roof.
Okay. All right, thanks. If the applicant would like to come forward and state your name and address?
I'm Michael Emmerich. Where do I live? 1237 Sixth Avenue North. I have to get used to a new address since I moved four pairs. I represent Brett DePriest, the client on this house. We're doing something unusual for Germantown, a new single-family house. Needless to say, the neighborhood's relieved. We agree completely with the staff recommendations, but what we would like to discuss is item three, the 35-foot height. I thought we were going to be following the design guideline approval and whatever, and regardless, I'm going to refer to those.
Can you pass these?
Basically, in developing the design of this, we have 10-foot first floor, 9-foot second floor, approximately two and a half feet to finished floor above grade, and a roof slope of 12/8. This has resulted in a 37-foot basic maximum height to the ridge line for the hipped roof. The new design guidelines do say approximately 35 feet. There's that little funny symbol in there. And based on the fact that we're trying to maintain the foundation ratio, we're within the range of appropriate above grade, and we're at the low end of the roof slope. If we take two feet out, we either lose one end or the other and not meeting guidelines. The handout I have sent around, the elevation shows what portion of the roof exceeds the two feet, the little red line. On the opposite side of the page, there are a number of residences that are circled with their existing heights. This block is unusual in the neighborhood because it has the most surviving two-story houses, and they're generally tall, the two-story houses ranging from 34 to 42 feet in height. So we're looking for a little discretion in terms of working between the various design guidelines that have gotten us to this 37-foot height to basically get permission to do the 37-foot height.
Okay, any questions for Michael? So just the height is the only thing you're?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else, would anyone like to say anything, or you're just, okay. All right, thank you. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing closed public hearing, discussion, and I think we can just focus pretty much on just height.
Yeah, I didn't realize the applicant would be making this presentation, but I was curious, and is the hipped roof form and the protrusion above the 35 feet is, you know, again, is back. As you start taking a hip and kind of doing this with it, it gets a little wonky sometimes, so I don't find this to be egregiously out of, improperly scaled, or it's not as if an applicant is doing a front wall that's like 36 at the parapet and they need it to squeeze in an extra third floor or a rooftop deck or something like that. So I think in this case, my, I don't find this contrasting greatly, especially with the examples of adjacent homes that are more than 35.
Yeah, I feel the same way.
Yeah, I'll have to agree. I'm familiar with Michael's work and how much he tries to, he loves that neighborhood, he lives in this neighborhood, and there's, and with the other properties surrounding this house being of varying heights, I don't have a problem with the extra scale.
Move approval with the staff's recommendation, accepting item number three, that the application be approved as presented with respect to height.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Good seeing you, Michael. All right, 910 Waldkirch. Is that it? Waldkirch?
I think so. 910 Waldkirch is an application for construction of a new residence and outbuilding. The non-contributing building seen here has been approved administratively for demolition. Similar to a couple cases ago is a water easement running diagonally through the front yard, which restricts the buildable area. The new home is proposed at a story and a half with a ridge height of 27 feet 10 inches from grade and a width 29 feet 6 inches. Staff finds the proposed building to meet the design guidelines for height and scale, roof form, orientation, materials, and proportion and rhythm of openings. There are a few materials which staff would recommend having final approval. The new building, I'm going to go back to the site plan, meets the base zoning setbacks, however, the front setback doesn't line up with the nearest contributing building as is normally required due to the restriction of that easement running through there. You actually can't build any closer to the front property line. Therefore, staff finds the front setback appropriate here. The proposed outbuilding seen here is one and a half stories with a footprint of 576 square feet and a height, ridge height 21 feet. It will have the same materials proposed for the residence. Staff finds that the outbuilding meets Section 3H of the design guidelines for outbuildings. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of this application with the conditions that the finished floor height is consistent with those of adjacent historic houses to be verified by staff, that staff have final approval of the masonry, windows and doors, porch posts and railing, and the roof color, and the location of the HVAC was not noted, and that that is located behind the house or on a side facade beyond the midpoint as well. Meeting those conditions, the application meets Section 3 for new construction in the Waverly Belmont Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Paul? Okay, thank you, Paul. Is applicant here, would they like to?
I think they're good.
Do you have any comments, or you're?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so for the record, the applicant agrees with all the recommendations. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing closed public hearing. Do we have a motion or a discussion?
Move approval, I guess with applause, for an appropriately scaled house and finding also that the setback, you know, given the easement that runs through and the effort to push the front porch to, you know, sort of meet the existing setback, you know, well done, and finding that it meets all the appropriate guidelines for Waverly Belmont, move approval, staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 519 Ackland Park Drive.
All right, 519 Ackland Park Drive is an application to construct a new duplex on a vacant lot. The house you see there has been demolished, as approved by staff, it was non-contributing. The duplex, well, before I get into the design, a little bit more of the context, this, these two lots are to the immediate left and next of the lot at 519. These buildings are duplexes that were approved by this commission four or five years ago. There's not a whole lot of historic context on this street, but the surrounding area is one and a half story historic houses, and that's why these were approved at that scale. The proposed new duplex on this lot is also a one and a half story house. It is to be 29 feet tall, including roughly two foot of exposed foundation. It will be 36 feet wide with a full-width porch and a pair of front gabled dormers. I guess I'll stick there. The materials are typical of new construction, we approve cement fiber siding, split faced block foundation, asphalt shingle roof, a metal roof on the front porch. The elevations show brick columns on the porch with wooden posts above and a brick porch floor. Brick is typical of porch columns but not porch floor. Staff recommends that that be another material, which typically might be concrete. The form, as I think I said, are side gabled, one and a half story. There is a rear wing on the building that is functionally two stories, but the side walls are stepped in to help break up and reduce the massing, keeping it in a, essentially a one and a half story form. And that's how you would see it from the rear. The application also includes an outbuilding. It will be one story with an eve height of nine feet, total height of 15 feet. The scale would be appropriate, however, it's proposed at 777 square feet, whereas the guidelines allow up to a maximum of 750 square feet. So staff would ask that that, or recommend that that be reduced. And to sum up, staff recommends approval of the proposed infill and outbuilding at 519 Ackland Park Drive with the conditions that the porch floor shall be concrete or another typical material, and the brick selections for the columns are approved administratively, the windows, doors, and roofing selections are approved administratively, that the material of walkways and driveways are approved administratively. I didn't mention, but also the front stairs flare out. So staff would recommend that the front stairs do not flare out towards the bottom, and that the outbuilding shall be reduced to be no greater than 750 square feet. With those conditions, staff finds that the project would be compatible with surrounding historic houses and meet the guidelines for the Richland West End Edition Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Okay, any questions for Sean?
Sean, the cantilevered, bracketed fireplace bumps. Have we had a lot of, I don't remember a previous discussion about those, maybe not in this forum, or maybe I do, I don't know. What's the staff's past evaluation of those?
With true chimneys, we do typically require that there be a foundation that extends to ground. And foundation, or chimneys that project are not factored into setbacks, they don't count against setback encroachments, or as setback encroachments. We've not always required that of, like, these ventless pop-out fireplaces, but they do need to have some perception of, you know, carrying the weight. So brackets have been approved to do that before, but, you know, the commission could ask.
I don't know if there's a better solution, I just, in this one, looking at the proportion of how you cap it, and that that's below the rim board or, you know, between first and second, I don't know that it would necessarily be better if you made it bigger. You know, it sort of announces itself, the bigger you make it, the more important it becomes. That's not an objection necessarily to how it's presented, I just wanted to see if the staff had given any previous thought, or if we sort of had an interpretation around best way to go about that.
It was, is consistent with other similar features that have been approved, but if the commission wanted a more substantial foundation, that's...
I also ask just because it's so far front to the house, it's certainly very near the front and normally wouldn't even maybe rise to the level. Thanks for your comments.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to?
Same applicant as last case.
Same as fourth. Okay, so for the record, the applicant agrees with staff recommendations. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing closed public hearing. Do we have a motion or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, with respect to 519 Ackland Park Drive, I move for approval with the conditions in the staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, on to other business, building and signage elimination.
You may remember this, it's something we've been talking about for a while, and this is in regards to a policy that would likely affect Broadway, Second Avenue, and the downtown, the three downtown overlays. The design guidelines are not very specific about some of the issues relating to building and signage elimination. and signage illumination. Additional guidance can be given via italicized information in all those guidelines. So staff recommends a policy that's outlined in your report regarding building lighting that could be incorporated as italicized information. And I'm not going to try to cover every line of that here unless you'd like to, but there are a few things that are worth highlighting. The first guideline is that lighting must be concealed and unobtrusive. So that's the guideline that exists. We recommend a policy that specifies that colored lighting or lighting fixtures that spin or move are not appropriate. Staff could not find any other commissions that allow for colored lighting, colored building lighting, in historic districts. Of course, there are some historic landmark buildings that have it, but those are typically very large buildings on large lots, and here you have very narrow buildings all close to each other. If all of them are allowed to have that different color, then we thought that the lighting would no longer be unobtrusive, which is what the design guidelines call for. In addition, staff is concerned that such a design guideline would not meet the Secretary of Interior Standards, which of course they are required to do by state law. Colored building illumination has the potential to change the look of or obscure architectural features, which doesn't meet standard five and nine. This policy would clarify that lighting on top of a rooftop addition is also not appropriate. The rooftop additions are supposed to be as invisible as possible, allowing for more lighting than just the low lighting needed for the tables and chairs and the entryway would really not meet the Secretary of Interior Standards. So before I move on to signage lighting, which is somewhat connected and somewhat disconnected, are there any questions about the building illumination? Okay. These first two changes to signage can also be added as italicized information because, again, they're just providing further guidance. They're not changing the existing guidelines. The information about the color of the fixture and temporary lighting has always been our policy, just not memorialized in the design guidelines. For instance, we have never reviewed holiday lighting. Christmas lighting has likely been up a little more than 30 days, but we've never really enforced that. You've allowed for chasing lights as a modification, so this italicized point is to provide some parameters, sorry, I forgot to have them up here. Some parameters is when they are appropriate. As you may remember, we've also had several discussions about bare bulbs. However, the design guidelines list them specifically as a type of lighting that is not allowed. So it's something that we can talk about today as to whether or not you want to allow them in the future, but that's not something that can be added as italicized because that would be changing the existing design guidelines. But we are working on revisions for Broadway, for at least Broadway. So that's something that could be incorporated there. We just need your feedback. Any questions?
Is that everything or so?
That's just the highlights of everything that's in your report.
Okay. And are you looking for us to discuss this now as far as it...
Yes, I think there's public comment and then discussion, yes.
Okay.
And a vote.
Okay, thanks. Any questions to Robin before we open public hearing? Okay, open public hearing. Would people like to come speak regarding this? Just come and state your name and address.
I'm with the Tennessee Historical Commission, and I live here in Nashville, 171 Antioch Pike, down in the Glencliff area. I have a few points that I wanted to mention, but I, like I say, currently am the Historic Sites Director for the State of Tennessee. And previous to that, at the Tennessee Historical Commission, I've served five years as a local zoning coordinator for the State of Tennessee. And in that capacity for about five years, I worked with approximately 50 communities across Tennessee, helping establish historic zoning and helping them with enforcement, decisions, et cetera, for those years. I've also served previously, before I came here, which is right after Katrina, I was the Deputy Director of the Vucrey Commission in New Orleans in charge of the French Quarter and, of course, all the enforcement there of that zoning. I've also been the Executive Director with the Tennessee Preservation Trust here in Tennessee. And I have just had, been fortunate enough to have a lot of interface with communities and particularly with something like the French Quarter, which in many ways, some of their intense commercial areas down there are very similar to that. And many years ago, I was one of the people involved with helping initiate particularly studies on lighting down there and addressing it. That has resulted, that has grown since I left and has resulted in a very comprehensive approach towards lighting, particularly in business communities down there, et cetera. And I guess I wanted to come here today to encourage you to support the staff's position on this. You know, for us, historic districts are about authenticity from my perspective and I think from the commission's perspective. It's about authenticity and that when you do something this severe with lighting, in other words, every district deals with holiday lighting. Every district deals with specialty lighting for special events. It's sort of like banners. You know, if you put a banner up, it's for an event, you know, people are always pushing the edges at times, but you know, the banner's there for the special event. If you end up leaving the banner up all the time, it's no longer a banner, although it was a banner, you know, it's a sign now. Same thing with lighting. People that want to put up holiday lighting and leave that for forever, that is no longer holiday lighting. It's not special event. It's become, if you want to take buildings and wash them, special events, you know, et cetera, that's one thing. But if you want to take buildings and wash them with inauthentic colors, that essentially you're creating a character-defining element to the building. And as such, you're changing the authenticity of that structure and that environment. And by doing that, you no longer, you know, create an authentic historic environment. It's inauthentic. And it no longer represents, you know, the character and the character-defining elements of that historic district. And that's at the real core of these sort of things. It is controversial. At the same time, I think Robin mentioned this too. I'm not aware of any districts in the United States. I was privileged to be part of a public discussion, I think a few months ago, about this, and I spoke at that event as well. And I think, I know for the people that were there trying to support your staff's position and help explain what our perspectives are on this, you know, we brought in people and consultants that have worked all around the nation, that have done hundreds and hundreds of design guidelines for historic districts. Phil Thomason was one of those people. And, you know, they, again, could not point to, you know, what we saw consistently is this is not allowed in these districts. The other thing I didn't see is anyone presenting districts where specifically this type of approach is allowed or supported or promoted for a way to authentically represent historic districts. Or, of course, economic issues were brought up, is that this was necessary for the economic development of districts. And again, we feel strongly about that historic authenticity is at the very core of what makes these areas work. What makes them really interesting to people is because that unique authenticity, historic authenticity, it just resonates. It resonates with people on a visceral level, on a psychological level. There's something very profound about it. And when you degrade it and when you intrude upon it and you go past a certain point, it becomes, you know, almost burlesque. It loses that authenticity. It loses that resonance that it just naturally has, I think, with the public and with people in general. And we see district, you know, Charleston, New Orleans, and look at Broadway, you know, what's happening here. And I think there's always those pressures from businesses and I think from economic interests that feel that they have to promote this. We see this with all your big box retailers. We've seen it with all of your fast food places that will insist, we have to have these iconic images. And time after time in these historic districts, what has been enforced, what's been done is that is all scaled down and represented within the framework of normal signage, and it works. Those are often some of the most, ice cream places. They'll have a very standard, when they go to malls or strip malls or whatever, very standard kind of iconic front that say, we have to have this. But those stores, when they do alter and adapt to the authentic environments, those stores are almost always some of the most successful in these chains around the nation. There's been extensive economic research done on historic preservation and on these guidelines and the enforcement of them. A firm in DC, I'm sorry, the name escapes me right now, but it's been a landmark studies for the last three decades on this. And there is no, to my knowledge, and I've looked for this and challenged the public for years about this, there is no credible study that's ever been shown that shows that the enforcement of preservation standards in historic districts has a negative economic effect. Every legitimate study that I've been aware of, and the hundreds of them, and for the last 30 or more years, shows that the imposition of these standards always has a positive effect to varying degrees, but that it never has a, you know, what creates value is specialness. And we see it also in our neighborhoods. We see it with our residential areas. What creates value? Specialness, restrictions. Sometimes people feel that it is on, or sometimes the edges do need to be adjusted on it, but that we find particularly for these historic areas that these types of controls that have been well-defined, worked out over the last 75 years with the Secretary of Interior Standards and through best practices with historic districts, this has resulted in a standardized approach to this that we find is very economically powerful and very well-supported as best practices for historic districts. And again, we just, I feel strongly and we feel strong that the staff's position on this is very legitimate, very professionally based, and we would strongly encourage you to please support that with your staff and to please support that as part of your design guidelines here for your districts. And again, I just think that it's very profoundly supported by all the economic studies done and by best practices across the nation. And I think you've got, you know, we've got a great resource here that's being developed in great ways. It's got a lot of pressure, and I think you guys have a lot of responsibility and I'm sure you get a lot of criticism for, you know, for you hurting this and hurting that. But I think what's your, what, at the heart of it, of course, is what we're all trying to do is protect it so that it does keep this unique value and does make this great economic, it's all about economics. It does make this great economic contribution to our community. At the same time, it's such an important cultural element that's irreplaceable. If that helps in any way, I'd be happy to answer questions about my background or any of the perspectives.
Well, I think that the history was good for all of us.
Okay.
So I allowed you to go a little longer.
Oh, well, thank you. I'm sorry to impose on your time and the public's time. I apologize for that.
Oh, you're good. You're good. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Would anyone else like to come forward? Trey, just for the note that Historic Nashville is approving?
I'm Trey Bruce. I'm Vice Chair of Historic Nashville, and we had some reservations and concerns, but all that's been alleviated, and we agree with the draft policy that the commission's taken regarding building and signage elimination.
Thanks.
You bet.
Okay, if there's no other, closed public hearing, discussion. I know that she, Robin wanted to hear a little bit maybe our thoughts on the LED bulbs and the bare bulbs.
Yeah. And I'm in great support of the draft policy. I would urge the staff, though, as we move forward with looking at the bare bulbs and the LEDs, since that does come up so regularly, that we go ahead and address that. And I think the draft language is a good start, but in addition to the shape of the bulb, I do think it's important for us to address the color temperature that those bulbs emit as well. I know we can say white, but sometimes that color looks more like blue than white to me, so I think that's an important consideration to have in the language.
Yeah, I agree with the way it's actually, you know, five is written right now, because I do like the, I think this is good. Can we talk, I don't know about how, I guess that'd be just more discussion about that color part of it, because we will get more into that. But is there a, I mean, you don't have to know the answer, but maybe there is a scientific color, you know, or a technical color that we can make sure that lighting people can help us get up with?
I'm sure that there is, and that the language actually suggests it in that it talks about appearing as an incandescent.
But maybe there's a...
An incandescent has a color range that's...
Maybe that's what we put in there.
Specific to color.
The policy specifies daylight, a white daylight color. And we did see this as not a draft, but as a final document for you to vote on today. But if you don't think it's ready, of course, we can put it off again.
Well, we were going to vote. I just know you wanted to specify, make sure we talked about that. I'm going to call for a vote anyway.
But one point of clarification, though. If I heard you correctly beforehand, you said that we were adopting the italicized language and that since the LED bulbs weren't part of the italicized language, that we wouldn't be acting on those today, but that would be further studied.
That's correct. Everything but the bare bulbs. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about lighting in general.
No, just the bare bulbs.
Yeah, just the bulbs.
I think, yeah, the comment about temperature perhaps being added or further specified in what's numbered as five in the presentation would, is what we're, what the discussion has been about.
Yeah.
So that would be forthcoming in the guideline changes.
Right. Okay, so we've kind of discussed that. Was there any other item that you wanted us to discuss? I think it was just that one, right?
I would love for you to discuss any part of it that you want to.
Well, there were a lot of workshops and a lot of, you know, we've gone through a lot, but is there any other comments from it or it seems like we got where we were going, but...
Sure. You know, I think with the public meetings, with the discussions that we've had with the expert witnesses, with Historic Nashville, with Mr. Brown's testimony, I'm prepared and eager to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt this revised language.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you all for participating in that. Is there something about commissioner training?
Well, I'll ask you. It's been a long day. Do you want to do that today or should we put it off for another time?
I think it would be good to put it off, maybe when we know that the agenda might be a little shorter. I would, you know, maybe we can, maybe we can...
Yeah.
And as we always do, part of our initiation for new members is to make it the long meeting, but I do want to thank Ladonna Boyd and Eric Brown for agreeing to serve on the commission and welcome you two today and look forward to shorter, no, I appreciate you guys, appreciate your service.
Can I ask one other quick question before we adjourn? Every month we send you an email, excuse me, just checking in to see whether or not you're able to attend. Would an outlook request be better, easier, doesn't make any difference? Any thoughts? Yes, yes?
Yeah, outlook.
Maybe an outlook request as opposed to an email?
I have no opinion.
Yeah, even that Google thing would be good. You know, the survey, that Google survey.
But since you're asking for a specific time, I think, I mean, it's a set meeting, so I think either one's fine, but the outlook's pretty easy to click on in the calendar.
Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, meeting adjourned.